Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the regular Board of Supervisors meeting. This Tuesday, January 28th. We will be going into closed -- actually, let me use this very fancy gavel. We call the meeting to order at 8:00. Thank you, Stacy. Could we have a readout, please, from last closed session?
Yes. Closed session agenda items from January 14th. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.8, conference with legal counsel, Marcos Munoz, re potential purchase price and terms of payment for APN 042015032. Negotiating party, Jim Harrybird. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item three, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item four, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, County of Calaveras versus Sascornia Ranches Limited Partnership et al., Calaveras County Superior Court case number 20CV45113. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. And today's closed session agenda item?
For today's closed session agenda, item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation.
Thank you. And now we will break and go into closed session?
No, I don't see any public comment either.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Any public comment? Seeing that there's no public comment, we will go ahead and break and go into closed session and be back at 9:00.
Thank you.
Welcome back, everybody. If we could stand now for the Pledge of Legions. Supervisor, Tom Nellie, could you lead us, please?
Sure, Mr. Chair, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, could we please report out, not read out, from closed session?
Yes. Report out for today's closed session. Item one, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2, conference with legal counsel, re anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure to litigation. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. And we'll move on to staff announcements?
Good morning, board. Lisa Medina and Shawna Morales with CCAS, and we also have several of our CCAS staff on board today. So this is Bailey. She is a rottweiler mix. She is almost two years old. She's been with us for over a year. She came to us injured, but we got her to the vet and took care of her injuries and her sicknesses. We receive very many animals and get calls out for service that have animals that are injured or need to be seen by the veterinarian. She's a very affectionate pup. She loves people. She doesn't care for female dogs too much, so she likes the male dogs. So we're looking to find a home where she has a companion of a male dog. She's very sweet. She loves people. She's very quiet in her kennel. She's just a good, sweet dog. And we're looking to place her in a forever home. So this, we're presenting Bailey. And she's quiet. She will need a surgery. It's called a TPLO surgery. It's kind of similar to an anterior cruciate ligament in humans, and that surgery is quite pricey. We're looking at doing some fundraising specifically for Bailey, but we wanted to highlight her since she's been with us for so long, and she does need that surgery. But we're looking at funding experiences and things that we can do to help Ms. Bailey along and get into a home. So with that, we have another announcement, which is pretty exciting. On Valentine's Day, on Saturday, the 15th, from 11:00 to 2:00, we are going to have a speed dating event for, not for humans, but for the four-legged kind. So we're going to be setting up this event at the shelter, and what it's going to be is pretty much an adoption event. No kissing by any humans, just the dogs, and maybe the humans will get chocolate kisses, but that's it. So we're not doing any of that. And it's called the CCAS Speed Dating Adoption Event. And the purpose of this event is to highlight our animals that we have at our shelter and also to get notification out to our constituents and to our public about the services and things that we offer at the shelter. At any given time, we have up to 40 to 50 animals, Shawna, in the shelter, and we have several that are in need of adoption. Bailey is one of those cases where, you know, she's a sweet dog, and she's going to need some assistance from her humans if we don't take care of it first. But also to educate our public on the things that we do day in and day out, we will also have focus and also give me shelter representatives at this event, so we're looking forward to that as well. And our goal is to get at least one animal adopted. That's our goal. We've been pretty successful at our last events, huh, Shawna?
Yeah.
Where we've had at least one animal adopted at each one of our events. Shawna will not be up for adoption again, I just want to say, even though I would adopt her. And so we're looking to forward to that event. And if you have any additional questions, I'm here to answer them and/or Shawna or any of our other CCAS staff.
Did you adopt our friend from the last meeting yet?
Ace is still with us.
Okay. And he wasn't ready to be adopted yet?
He's ready to be adopted.
He is?
Yeah, he's ready to go.
She's been with us the longest I've been with us, or I believe she was with us since December last year.
Yeah.
Could I ask you, sponsored adoption, wasn't Bailey a sponsored or not?
Bailey can be a sponsored adoption, you bet.
Okay, but I noticed there were two on the board. What does that mean?
So that just means that they've either been sponsored by another entity, which means their adoption fees are paid for, their spay, their vaccines, everything, they're good to go out the door. All you need to do is call us up and say, you know, "I want this dog to be part of my family," and that's it.
Right.
She's beating the dog.
Yes.
She's very photogenic, too. Look at her. Look how...
Any other questions? Thank you, Lisa.
Well, thank you so much. And again, thank you for this opportunity in letting us bring the animals.
Thank you, Sheldon.
And that is all I have. Thank you.
Good morning, Judy.
Good morning. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources Director. I am very happy to be for you today to introduce Micah Martin, who joined us yesterday as our Public Works Director.
Good morning, board. I'm really excited to be here with Calaveras County. I come from Southern California. I have a lot of experience in the public works industry, and I'm excited to put that to good use here in the county and to work with such an amazing team in the Public Works Department. So thank you for having me.
Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you. Captain?
Morning, board, Mr. Chair, this CEO, counsel, and Madam Clerk. I'm here. My name is Tim Sturm. I'm a captain with the Sheriff's Office. But today, I'm here as the unit leader of the Calaveras Cold Case Task Force, and I just wanted to give a brief statement and announcement on that team. The Cold Case Task Force was formed in 2020. It has about 20 members, operates under an advisory board of six people. But the notable fact about the task force is that it operates as a nonprofit entity, which means that it can generate its own funding. That funding has been used over the last several years to pay for private laboratory testing, DNA extraction, and forensic investigative genetic genealogy. Recently, in the last two weeks, and you may have seen the Sheriff's Department media release, that testing led to the discovery and identification of a person who has been deceased for numerous years, over 40. And although it was not the news that his mother would have liked to have received, the Cold Case Task Force was able to notify his mother that his remains had been in the custody of Calaveras County since 1985, but we now did have her son, which means that she now has the closure that her son did not voluntarily abandon his family. So ultimately, the Cold Case Task Force has expended over $170,000 of community-generated funds, not county money, on that project. And the purpose of speaking today is just to say thank you to the community, thank you to the board. I recognize several people on the bench and, in fact, in the audience who have supported the annual November fundraiser for the team. We do have three profiles, DNA profiles, which have been assigned for genealogy, so there may be additional news forthcoming. But I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak for a moment on that, and most of all, thank you to the community of Calaveras. There's no questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's absolutely a team effort. There's, like I said, about 20 people assigned, and they are the ones who make everything happen.
Captain, thank you. Thank you for the events that you put on. I mean, seeing the families that do get closure from this is unbelievable and really appreciate, obviously, the work that you do. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your support.
Morning, Lynn.
Good morning, board. I'm Lynn DeGroot. I'm your information technology director, and I'm here today to give an update around broadband. At the end of last year, the California Public Utilities Commission awarded a $12 million grant to Comcast for broadband infrastructure. The, that's just a little more than a third of the $30 million that was allocated to Calaveras County under the federal funding account program. The remainder would likely be deferred to a second round. That may or may not be funded, depending on how the budget goes with the state this year. More importantly, the county partnered with Golden State Connect Authority to design an open access broadband fiber network that would leverage the full amount of the funding. This project will ensure a foundation for, from which broadband access can expand throughout the county and the sierras. And so several county representatives, including members of the board, will be in Sacramento on Thursday to petition the CPUC to reconsider their recommendation and award the full funding to Golden State Connect Authority in round one. Several local leaders have also given video testimonials on the critical need for broadband in the county. Those will be sent directly to each commissioner in advance of the meeting. The public can help as well. We would like to urge as many people as possible to call in and make public comment this Thursday in support of the Golden State Connect Authority project. Just a one-minute comment from the public can make a huge difference. We have calling information. Kathy, my colleague, has a flyer for people, and if anybody would like to get that information, email to them, anybody who's watching at home, they are welcome to email me. That's at LdeGroot, L-D-E-G-R-O-O-T, at calaveracounty.gov.
Does anybody have any comments? Supervisor, thank you. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Chair Hubbard. Honorable board, Kathy Galino, Economic and Community Development. And yes, I'm following up. I have the flyers here. And also, thank you very much to our clerk for getting up on the screen during your breaks the information on calling in for Thursday. The commission meeting starts at 11:00 a.m. Thank you, supervisors, that will be joining Lynn DeGroot and myself at that meeting. It's very important that the community have their voice heard, that this award gets funded through Golden State Connect Authority in Calaveras County. And it's an amazing project to really reach our upper and most vulnerable communities up country, and broadband is something that's needed not only for safety, public health, and for education. I want to thank our partners. So a lot of folks did provide video testimony, including our sheriff, Health and Human Services, Mr. Regagna, Chief Johnson from Ebbets Pass, and many, many others, including OES. So thank you, everyone. Please let your voice be heard. Have a good day.
Thanks, Kathy. Do we have any other staff announcements? Okay, well, we'll move on now to recognitions and acknowledgements, and I've passed the gavel to Supervisor.
Item two, recognition and acknowledgements proclamation. Clerk of the Board of Supervisors proclaimed the week of February 14th through February 20th, 2025, as Kindness Week in Calaveras County and further deemed the county as a Random Acts of Kindness Zone. This proclamation recognizing February 14th through 20th, 2025, as National Random Acts of Kindness Week, whereas National Random Acts of Kindness Week will be observed February 14th through 20th, 2025, and Random Acts of Kindness Day is February 17th, 2025. And whereas, Calaveras County has participated in Random Acts of Kindness Week since 2010. And whereas, all who live and/or work within Calaveras County are encouraged to practice Random Acts of Kindness, a tradition started in Angels Camp by the Jim Burgans family. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors... Oh, sorry. Skipped.
You're all done.
Yep. Okay.
So you open it up for any comments?
Any public?
From the board and then the public.
Board, any comments?
Our first act of kindness will start by thanking you for reading that.
Helping me fix it after the mistake. So kind. Any public comments?
I was around when Jimmy Burgans came up with this wonderful idea. My mother used to fly over all the schools while the children stood out there in hearts. And I think it's a fabulous thing, and it shows what a great county we are. So I think this is a fabulous proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
So I'm Jim Burgans. Some of you know that. I just want to thank the board, the county, for continuing to keep this thing alive for so many years and to recognize that it's an important idea, that we need to be kinder to one another and listen to one another and just... So as this goes on, the Calaveras County Office Education has been a kind of a center for the kindness thing for the last, I don't know, 10, 15 years or whatever. So every year, there's two or three individuals in Calaveras County that throw money at the county office education, and we buy like thousands of these wristbands to promote kindness. So I brought some wristbands for y'all to wear, to share and give away. There's some here for the community if you want, so I'll give you those. But I just, I just want to say thank you. I don't know of any other county that has done this, and I'm grateful to live in this county where it's important. And the City of Angels also does the same thing. So thank you to the board, thank you to the staff for taking this thing, keeping it going, and I hope that it makes a difference. That's my hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Jim, could I ask, how's Jill doing?
Jill's doing great. Yeah, she's doing great.
Because she's normally here for this.
Yeah, yeah.
I also wanted to say, if I could, really quickly, that this is kindness to others, but remember to be kind to yourself.
Yeah.
You've got to put the oxygen mask on yourself before you can help others, too.
It's just, it's important that we take better care of ourselves and each other. I mean, really. So anyhow, thank you very much, board, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Jim, Jim, don't leave. We need you for the picture.
Oh. Sorry.
Now? Okay. Whereas, all who live and/or work within Calaveras County are encouraged to practice Random Acts of... Oh, now, therefore, be it resolved...
Sorry. We need to vote.
Okay. I'm learning.
Look at all the kindness there.
So you need to call for the vote this time because you act like chair.
I'll call. Okay. Call for a vote?
Do we have a motion?
Do we have them?
I so moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now.
Okay. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors designates the week of February 14th through the 20th, 2025, to be Kindness Week throughout the county. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors declares that the County of Calaveras be deemed a Random Acts of Kindness Zone during the week of February 14th and continue through the 2025 year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if anybody... Thank you. If anybody wants more wristbands, the county office education has some, or y'all can contact me. So thank you very much. Oh, okay. Great, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll all be back next year, okay? So keep it going. Thank you very much. Keep it going.
This is cool. This is cool, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We'll all be back next year, okay? So keep it going.
We'll move on now to general public comment. Madam Clerk, could you read that?
Add any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you. Terry?
Good morning. Terry McBride, New California State Committee Chair, Senator for New California State and the Senate, pro tempore president of the state. This is a fascinating article about California's cash crisis, and basically, we're in default. I'm going to read a little bit of it. Governor Newsom issued 30-day notice to announce with California, in a cash crisis, schools, counties, cities, and state agencies should have no expectation of full funding. This is government speak for we are about to default. This is written by Chris Street. He is the one that got Orange County out of their bankruptcy. He knows his business. And he also sat on the board to pull California out of default before. He knows what he's talking about when he writes this stuff. He is our chief financial officer. Anyway, the process known as issuing a budget letter came just 13 days after Newsom claimed in his January 10 budget proposal for the coming '25-'26 fiscal year, beginning on July 1st, that the budget is balanced and reflects minor revenue growth over the three-year budget window. Remember, I brought paperwork showing that was all straight-up lie. Here are some things that I think are quite important. This huge fire that's going on down there, a lot of it is due to state mismanagement, a lack of water. How'd you like to be that fire guy that went to turn on the spigot and there was no water coming out? Additionally, the state-sponsored Fair Plan, which many of us are on because we don't have a choice, the insurer of last resort was insolvent, insolvent, with $3 billion of assets to cover $8 billion of claims. With Fair Plan allowed to push losses to every insured property holder, did you know they can do that? MTT wanted every insured property in California is at the risk of a $5,200 assessment. Who's got that kind of extra money sitting in their pocket? That's what we're up with, with California, the state that it is right now. I've got this here. Anybody can look this up on Substack. It's called "Mountaintop Times." It's quite good. He writes really excellent articles. Saturday, I gave you again because I didn't catch that. The time was off on the last one, but it starts at 11:00 and goes till 1:00. And this is where people can talk about their concerns about the elections because, as you see, and they're talking about making everybody have an ID, which we should have. And we need to go back to the Constitution. Did you know that the California Constitution was originally written in 1849 and got changed in 1879 to a progressive document? So you need to be aware of these things. This is why we're in the spot that we are in now. With New California, we'll go, we have written a constitution. Everybody will be allowed to vote on it. It's like our good USA Constitution. Please come Saturday, find out why we are the answer. Trump's behind us. He knows what we're doing, and he supports us. God bless all of you. Thank you.
Morning. Is your comment about the animal shelter?
Lisa Medina checked and said that I just wanted to make a report to you.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Just a piece of information.
Appreciate it.
So I understand about the agenda thing. Back in June, Gimme Shelter opened up a fund with the Calaveras Community Foundation, and I wanted to let you know that as of today, we are approaching $39,000 in that fund that we've raised for the new shelter. So that's how much support we have in this county. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Butler?
My name is Christopher Butler, publisher of calaveras2026election.com. Ben, during the January 14th, 2024 Board of Supervisors meeting, you attempted to have portions of my public statement stricken from the published record of the meeting because my statement included, quoting you, allegations of malfeasance or whatever, and that you didn't hear burden of proof. For the record, county council was compelled to verbally advise you in real time publicly of the fallacy of your attempt to suppress official acceptance of my comments in hold. Let's examine your concerns. Was it allegations of malfeasance or whatever when I stated you were officially warned of potential fines in 2019 due to your 2018 campaign finance violation of the Political Reform Act, with you having been classified by the Fair Political Practices Commission as a campaign non-filer, in their case, number 2019-00576? Was it allegations of malfeasance or whatever when I stated I had irrefutable evidence to submit a formal complaint to the FPPC about your persistent violations of the Political Reform Act as a campaign non-filer despite you having been warned in 2019 by the FPPC of the potential for consequences, including hefty fines? Is it allegations of malfeasance or whatever when I state that all four of last term's continuing incumbent supervisors are now subjects of concurrent open and pending FPPC cases for an assortment of campaign finance violations of the Political Reform Act? Since I last addressed this board two weeks ago, the FPPC published case number 2025-0042. That's the FPPC's newly open and pending case against Supervisor Stopper. Was it allegations of malfeasance or whatever when I stated you'd been caught on video by Calaveras County TV during the November 26, 2024 livestream of the Board of Supervisors meeting surreptitiously texting with one of your constituents who was seated in this room? Or that I had acquired evidence of your text message exchange from county council by public records request? Or that your constituent had a matter with beneficial property tax implications coming before this board into agenda items later in that meeting? Or that you ethically should have recused from voting due to an appearance of conflict of interests stemming from your constituent relationship? My fact pattern reveals I've repeatedly met your burden of proof. You now realize you face potentially tens of thousands of dollars in fines for multiple flagrant campaign finance violations of the Political Reform Act. The FPPC explicitly warned you, "Don't do this again." You did. I caught you. My name is Christopher Butler, publisher of calaveras2026election.com. Thank you. Thank you.
Stacy, would you please give these comments and statements to everybody on the table?
Do we have any further public comment? We'll move on to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Does any board member wish to remove any items?
Chair, I don't need to remove any, but I will abstain from voting on the December 10th minutes as I was not present.
Thank you. Any member of the public would like to pull an item?
Item five, Chair, specifically sub item E.
So that's item five, correct?
Item five, E, 5A.
Anyone else? I'll bring it back to the board for a motion. Second?
With the removal--
With the removal of, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Four-- do I say four zero then because of-- yeah, thank you. One extension.
So one, yeah. Yeah, 5-0 on all but three, which passed 4-0-1.
Thank you. We'll bring item five up now.
Item five, action item, Clerk of Board of Supervisors, appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, special districts, and county service areas.
Mr. Butner?
My name is Christopher Butner, publisher of calaveras2026election.com. During the January 14th, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting, District One Supervisor Toffenelli stated that D1 position on the Calaveras Fish and Game Commission had been empty for a while. I've since learned this Calaveras Fish and Game Commission position was vacant for eight years and after a prolonged gap and neglect, had attracted a well-qualified candidate for the county's consideration for appointment. The appearance of a dark horse candidate for this position, announced by Supervisor Toffenelli during the last Board of Supervisors meeting, took attentive observers by surprise. Improbably, after eight years vacant, this position suddenly attracted attention and candidacy from a second individual at the 11th hour on January 14th, 2025, from applicant Eric Holt, Director of the Calaveras Office of Emergency Services. This matter serves as a valuable civics lesson in participatory local government, providing an example and examination of the intentional lack of transparent administrative practices by this Calaveras government. Any extra time Holt may have for another position would be better spent serving the unmet needs of Calaveras citizens, hardening the county's built-in natural infrastructure against potential man-made and natural disasters, and focusing on preparing and maximizing critical resources required and anticipated for the county's inevitable response and recovery efforts. Perhaps Holt, in his role as Director of OES, might invest any extra available time toward mitigating the unnecessarily elevated risk of catastrophic fire posed to the community of Arnold and the surrounding inhabited and uninhabited areas within the Stanislaus National Forest by the new Tesla supercharging station that was inexplicably approved for installation and is now operational behind Meadowmont Center. Now, I need to remind you that Calaveras is in the top 10 of California's most wildfire-prone counties, having the unfortunate distinction as one of the top four counties in America with the highest cancellation rates of homeowners insurance. Perhaps Holt might, in any extra time available, accompany a county engineer on periodic structural inspections of our aging local tourist attractions, such as our three local caverns, long-cherished internationally-renowned attractions, where visitors from around the world arrive with an expectation of Calaveras public safety vigilance. Diluting Holt's primary job as Director of the Calaveras Office of Emergency Services by adding the responsibility for representing D1 on the Calaveras County Fish and Game Commission, I respectfully argue may jeopardize public safety. My name is Christopher Butner, publisher of calaveras2026election.com.
Mr. Holt?
I'd just like to say, I just moved here in May, so I don't know about the prior eight years, but I'm applying as a tax-bait citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the board?
Just that, you know, the Fish and Game Commission's been really solid. We've-- I've been on the representative for the past six years for the board. There's been a few times within that six years that a few District One people have processed through. They have not stayed solid. And when we have these meetings, it's not during work hours, it's later in the day. So this would not conflict with any work time per said individual. And I'm very happy if it's Mr. Toffenelli's recommendation to support him as--
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah, I just want to thank both applicants that have been-- that filed for this. And there has been-- there are two open positions. One is for District One, one's for just a general public member. I appreciate both of them coming forward. It has been a long time since District One has had somebody on this commission. So with that, I would move aside.
Do I need to ask one more public comment? Is there any other public comment? Thank you. Sorry, do we have--
Second?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll pass this 5-0. We'll move on now to the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, item number 13.
Item 13, informational item, Administrative Office, receive an update from LDA Partners regarding the design and construction documents for the new animal shelter.
Oh, what? Where am I going? Guess I moved it up.
Yes, thank you.
And is this on?
You're on.
Oh, it was on. Try it again. There you go.
Am I good now?
Yeah.
All right. All right, good morning, members of the board. My name is Errol, I'm with LDA Partners, and we're here to give you an informational update on the animal shelter. It's been a few months since I've been here before, but I wanted to kind of give you just kind of where we're at right now and kind of go over a cost estimate that we completed with a third party. All right, we're going to try this again.
That's better, thank you.
So I want to kind of start off by kind of reiterating what the project goal and were when we started the project. We wanted to create a facility that really encapsulated the modern needs and modern sheltering techniques and processes. We want the facility to be truly durable, energy efficient, and most importantly, provide comprehensive animal care. We go through the process where we want to focus on being effective towards both staff and animals we serve, and maybe most importantly, that it's cost-effective. So we're not trying to build a Taj Mahal. We're trying to build something that is very cost-effective, but really meets the needs of the citizen. Needs the animal, what meets the needs are the animals and citizens of Calaveras County. So to kind of remind you where we left off our program, our total building is roughly about 10,800 square feet, and it breaks down into different areas. So our public area is roughly around 2150 square feet, dog habitats 3,000 square feet, cat habitats 500-1500 square feet. Staff areas, that's where offices for CEOs, directors, et cetera, roughly 1,500 feet. And the core support spaces, another 2,700 feet. That gets us to our rough total of around 10,800 feet. We are located on the existing site, the existing facility. And as we've kind of gone through and organized our drawings, our first priority is the dog habitats. And so we talked before, of course, we established an alternate strategy. I mean, we're going to get the price for the full build-out, but we segregated the project into the dog habitats versus the former, and then the rest of it. That way, we can get an accurate assessment of what the cost is for each part of that facility. To kind of refresh everyone, this is the existing site. We have the focus trailer, we have some storage containers, and the existing admin and modular building. Our new building, overlaying on top of the existing, you can kind of see where the footprint is in relation to the common system structure right there. And so you can see it's quite larger in size, and that's the accommodate, different levels of care that we're trying to achieve. This is the floor plan that we have. And so you can see the different colors, how it's kind of broken out. The area on the left in the blue, that's really the dog habitats and that core function area. So that would include areas for the cattle, plumbing systems, and electric systems. That's part of that core structure. The area in green on the right, that would be our deductive alt. And so the way we've structured our bid is we're going to get the cost for the whole facility. What we're also going to do is deductive alt, which is what is the deductive cost of the area in green. And so when the project comes back to the Board of Supervisors, you can decide, should we just build the dog area or should we go to the entire facility? That gives us the most flexibility and gives you the most flexibility in terms of how we want to build it. One of the comments we heard before was to keep it relatively simple and straightforward. We're not trying to introduce any fancy form, we're just kind of keep very simple gobbles, moving blocks, technically very cost-effective for construction. And this is kind of where we're at on our cost point. We sent this project out to a third-party estimate.
Sure. All right. And we get that estimate back from them. Then we talk-- we base that or index that against what we have in our own data mine. And then the third part of that is we talk to local contractors as well. So we have a number of animal shelters that are both in construction and design. We're talking to those contractors directly so we can see what those actual costs are in the real world today. So that we have a very good understanding of where we see the cost coming in at. We've broken out this estimate between CSI Division, that's Construction and Specifications Institute, they organize different trades in the construction industry, and this is broken out even further by site costs and building costs. And then even further again from the hard cost and the soft cost. The hard costs are what the contractor is paying for. Those are the elements of the building construction itself. The soft costs are things that are not physically attached to the building, or professional fees, permit fees, furniture, things of that nature. And then we also add other costs, which I put on there for project contingencies, estimates for escalation going into the future. And that's how we get our overall total project cost. So to kind of break this down, is our overall site, we're expecting to spend roughly about $1 million. That is for grading, bringing in the utilities, resizing utilities, additional power. The building construction itself is roughly about another, you know, 7 million, 7.2 million. We've also broken down the contractor general conditions. That's essentially the cost of the contractor doing business, his overhead and profit, the insurance and bonds. And typically, contractors will throw in a contingency in their number to cover unforeseen items as well. That gets us a total construction cost of just over $8.5 million. And again, this has been also checked against other contractors that are-- have active shelter projects in the state of California. That's-- so that gets our total construction hard cost, again, of roughly $8.5 million. Our soft costs, those are things that-- for materials inspections, again, fees, that's roughly 1.7, and there's just under $1 million in project contingencies. That gives us a total estimate for a total project, hard cost and soft cost and contingencies of just over 11.2 million. And with that, open up to any questions that the board may have.
Do you have any questions? I do.
Sure.
A couple of quick fencing. Is the fencing--
Because I know the outdoor areas are just as important as the inside. Correct.
I didn't see that broken down in the hard cost. Are they included or is that--
Yes, that's included within the site cost, Division 32 exterior improvements. So there's-- we are fencing the-- they're around the entire site, along the front, where we're using the building as a fence, if you will, around the rear of the site that all is enclosed. In the back of the house, there is also a secure area for staff.
Got it, thank you. And landscaping?
Yes. Minimal landscaping primarily for the front of the building, the public frontage, or the front by the parking lot.
Okay. Thank you. And if we could go back to the blueprint of the--
Sure.
Proposed building?
Mm-hmm.
I'm confused with the cat suites in the middle. At the moment, we have five cat suites, and it looks like in the proposed, we're only getting three of those. It's difficult for me to explain, but there are two cat suites and there are two small rooms behind the cat suites. Are those cat suites as well?
So the cats are broken into different types of cat habitats. So we have main cat adoption, those are kind of more front and center, cat flexible areas depending upon an influx of kitten season, areas for caddios, those are more communal housing, and they are interior-exterior. So the animal can go outside and habitat outside and also come in to be safe. There's also areas for isolation and quarantine. And so those are kind of in the left where that cat prep area is. There's a PPE room, basically, it's a negative pressure room, so you go in and it doesn't contaminate the rest of the facility. And so those are more for quarantine areas.
So, for example, we've had hoarding situations where all of a sudden, they have to take on 88 cats.
Yes.
How does that work with--
The flexible area. So cat habitats are typically two-sided. In extreme conditions, when you have an influx or something like you've just described, they can be shut down. And so those habitats, where they have two compartments, they can be closed down so that each compartment acts as its own. That allows you for a temporary doubling of cat habitats. It's not recommended for a long term, but in cases of extreme, that's what happens.
And then could you explain the dog section? And how many dogs would we be able to accommodate?
Mm-hmm. So the dogs are broken up a little bit similar as well. So we have both-- a lot of flexibility in our dog habitats. We have areas strictly for puppies because puppies are housed differently for larger dogs. Most adult dogs are housed in individual kennels. A typical kennel is a total of four by 12, and it's divided in half. So they have an area where they can go into interior or exterior, or actually more closely, where they can live and inhabit, and another section where they can kind of do their business. We don't want to have them eating and sleeping where they're going-- where they're going to the bathroom. So we have different sections of dog habitats. The puppy area, the small dogs, that's typically cages. The kennel area, we have both all-interior kennels and both interior and exterior kennels. The all-interior kennels, which is kind of right in the middle, that has large kind of garage doors. I kind of characterize this as doors, kind of like you'd see in a fire station, roll-up doors that can open up, get the fresh air, and get the natural environment in. We do that one because it's very cost-effective. The other types of habitats we have over on the left-hand side are more flexible areas. Those are interior-exterior, where one half of that kennel, that one four-by-six side is interior, there's a guillotine door or a saloon door that allows them to go outside. So the other half of that kennel is on the exterior. There's also areas for quarantine. Typically, the quarantine areas are also segregated. That's a negative pressure mechanical system, again, to prevent, you know, disease spread and for disease control. That's over on the top here. And then there's other flexible areas for individual, maybe just a simple, single room or small kennels. With dogs, we try to not keep a lot of dogs in a one habitat. We try to limit that to, you know, eight at the very most. That's for noise control, disease control, and to reduce the stress on the dog itself. You can imagine how, when all the dogs start barking together, how loud and stressful it can be, not only for the dogs, but for the humans. And so that's why we compartmentalize in that way.
Yeah, I've visited your facility that you designed in El Grove, and I just thought it was genius.
Thank you.
And when you walk into our shelter, it's just a cacophony of dog barking. And when you walk into the shelters that you've designed--
We're hoping to make it better.
Awesome. One other question regarding the design, the small mammals. Do they get any natural light? I know I was talking to Michael yesterday, and he's got hamsters and turtles and that sort of thing.
Yes, yeah, so the small mammals is one of those that are sometimes often forgot about, but they're-- it's kind of a-- we use it for, you know, rabbits, guinea pigs. Sometimes we'll put some reptiles in there, depending on space. We generally try not to keep predators with their prey together, but sometimes we have to make exceptions. But for natural light, the way we do that is solar tubes. And so it may not have a direct window, but we have essentially a sealed skylight, for lack of a better term, that brings that natural light into the space. And so it may not have a direct window, but we have essentially a sealed skylight, for lack of a better term, that brings that natural light into the, into the space. We like the solar tubes as opposed to skylights. Skylights have a tendency to leak. Solar tubes are factory sealed and so they do not leak.
Thank you. And a last question that I have is, can we get started on the site work while we're raising money to?
That's probably a question I have to get back to you on and how we would structure that bid. It's not packaged that way currently. There could be some benefits from pros and cons in doing that.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, sorry. Supervisor Stoppner?
I do. This seems to just be dragging on, so I'll just be straightforward.
Mm-hmm.
Architectural and structural drawings, when can we expect to see those so we can go out for a bid on this thing?
I would expect that we have a couple of things that we need to clean up still, primarily related to site and with the utilities. When we get that.
We led the contract in May, so we've had all this time to clean all that up. This keeps dragging on. Can we just get it done?
It is.
Give us architectural and structural drawings so we have a package to go get bids on so we can get this thing in construction.
Yes.
Because every day you're waiting and we're waiting, costs are going up.
I understand. And this is one of our top priorities to get out the door.
So in a month, 30 days from now, 60 days?
I would, I would prefer, but this is also for discretion. I think it'd be best for the county to get, go through plan check, at least have one round of plan check before it goes out to bid. That's obviously up to discretion of the county.
We've got to have those for plan check.
Correct.
So I'm waiting to know when we're going to have structurals and architecturals so we can?
I have, I have a progress set already put together. We're not 100% complete. I would say we're probably around 85% complete right now.
So timeframe, 30, 60, 90?
If you put me on the spot, I would say probably, I think a month is probably accurate then.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there any public comment?
Yes.
Please come to the.
Actually, I'm sorry, your presentation was difficult to hear.
Sorry.
And you speak very quickly. This print is very small. So is this information going to be available online?
If you go online with the board, it's in the agenda packet for today.
Okay, because I looked at the agenda packet a couple of days ago and I didn't find anything.
Yeah, you should be able to find it, it's there.
Okay, thank you.
If you have any problems, let me know.
Yeah, okay.
Lisa.
Hello, good morning again, Lisa Medina, Department of Management Agency. I just would like to thank on behalf of CCAS staff, our volunteers, the commitment by our public and our different entities that support us, FOCUS, Gimme Shelter folks and everybody else. Staff mostly here, their support, this endeavor. This has been an ongoing heart wrenching, heartfelt, everything emotional around this whole subject for years. Eric and his crew have been wonderful. They listen to staff, they listen to the public, they've listened to FOCUS, our other volunteers. And they're key on, as you stated before, they build the best shelters in California. And there's a testament to that. The Elk Grove Shelter is incredible. All we want is just something that our animals will be safe in. We're looking for the best standards of care, something that is good for our county. And that's exactly what they have presented. They listen to us. We've been having ongoing meetings, sometimes weekly, and they have made and ensured us that this project will be in the best interest of our Calaveras family of animals. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Lisa. Alex? I was going to say, Alex, do you want to, you can do it from there.
We can't hear, but we're.
Even, I thought if that speaker was good enough to pick it up.
It's okay. It's okay.
I just have a comment and thank you, Mr. Tofanelli, for pressing that because it's been months. And also, I just, I'm very excited about this project, but I couldn't hear either very well. So I'm hearing eight million now for the dogs and I just thought it was seven. And I, but I couldn't hear what was any, very much what was going on.
Eric, could you clarify that please?
Sure. No problem, I'll try to speak a little bit slower and louder.
Alex, Alex, if you can stay, stay here so you can hear.
So the, the total pro, for the whole build out for construction cost is just over 8.5 million.
Okay, including cats?
Including the cats, the admin, exactly.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Because that is a bit scary. Another million added.
Yeah.
Any other public comment? Thank you, Eric, this is an informational.
Any other questions from the board?
I think we're done.
Okay.
Supervisor Stoppner, do you want to? Okay, thank you, thank you, Eric.
I have some copies of the presentation being filed, if you just want to read them. I have a few copies.
So we'll move on to item 14. Madam Clerk?
Item 14, informational item, administrative office, receive an update from the Calaveras Visitors Bureau on Tourism Promotion Activities.
I'm going to, wait till that's, so supervisor. Supervisor Stoppner, I am an employee of the Visitors Bureau, so I'm going to step out while the presentation, if I can hand the jacket to Ms. Quin.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, CEO.
Oh, Stacy, did we read out for 14?
Yes, we did.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, CEO Hitchcock, County Council. Stacy and Susan, good morning.
Is there a way to make that louder so other people can hear the last?
Unfortunately, no. I'm sorry.
I'll try to speak a little bit louder.
Does the other microphone work better?
They're both on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
My name is Jessica Johnson. I'm the admin manager with the Calaveras Visitors Bureau. And thank you, Board, for the opportunity to give the quick update of, from the CVB regarding our tourism promotion efforts and the opportunity to introduce the CVB to supervisor and all. Our mission statement, the Calaveras Visitors Bureau is the Calaveras County's core tourism organization dedicated to creating long-term sustainable economic growth for the region and its partners through innovative tourism programs and promotions and partnerships. This presentation reflects our mission, vision and values to support the county's strategic plan while serving our visitors and local community to the best of our ability. We aim to keep our transient occupancy tax totals as high as possible to help support public safety and market our incredible county. And in December, Calaveras hit just over 50% of its mid-year budget goal for TOT. And we do expect to achieve at least 100% of that goal by the end of the fiscal year in June. The CVB Board is a well-rounded group of local business owners, business and community leaders, business association and housing directors, lodging managers, marketing director for Bear Valley and for the Calaveras Big Tree State Park. And our staff includes a longtime resident who, with her husband, built half of Arnold in the 60s. It includes a retired history teacher, a school board member, college student that grew up here in Calaveras County. So all people who are fully vested in this county and seeing the success of the county as well as preserving the unique character and special way of life we have here. The operations of the CVB, we are open seven days a week in Angels Camp from 9:30 to 4:30. And our office in Murphy's is open five days a week from 10 to 4:00. In 2024, we greeted, well, in 2024, we greeted 14,000 visitors and we fielded thousands of phone calls. Simple thing, questions asking for directions or asking about events to funny phone calls like the Murphy's Hotel is haunted year round or when the times are for Pirate's Ferry. So, but then we also have some more serious situations where we were able to help a visitor. Her husband was up in Bear Valley with their small children and he was hurt and needed to get medical attention. We couldn't get into the, couldn't take the ambulance because he couldn't leave his children. But she didn't have a vehicle to get up to Bear Valley. And so she called us and then she came in and we were able to find a local contact that could get her up to Bear Valley and reunite with her family. So that was an important phone call. I'm glad we were available for them. The Visitors Bureau and the Film Commission are funded by the transparent, excuse me, the transient occupancy tax from both Calaveras County and the City of Angels Camp. The CVB also receives 50,000 from the City of Angels towards the operating, operation of the Angels Camp Museum. This stipend along with the admissions and membership to the museum pay for the operations, museum staffing, exhibits and maintenance of the museum. The profit from the sales of the gift shop go to the CVB. There are currently 10 part-time and two full-time employees at, for both the offices and for the museum. And there are currently 11 Board of Director positions, also representative from the county and the City of Angels Camp. In California, in, so California remains the top travel-related destination in the country right now. And in 2023, the CVB, we posted our 2023 numbers. The 24 numbers won't come out until April and then we can share those with you in May when we have those. But you'll, you can see from this graph, it's $154 billion industry in the state of California with 1.2 million people employed. Dean Runyon is, they collect the numbers for California, for all of the counties. And as you can see, since 2019, visitor spending has increased year over year. And then again, in May, we'll have those numbers for you for 2024. So the CVB, we receive the TOT from the county and from the City of Angels Camp. And we spend 12% on the overhead, 25% on payroll, 63% on the marketing. And then the marketing dollars, it's broken down, these are what we do with that money. Print ads, radio, visitor's guide, the social media, the data tracking, the fam trips, which are the travel writers, and the website, software subscriptions and so forth. Placere AI is our local, our location analytics tool that we use. And this is available with our county, our county rep and our city rep both have access to this tool. And what this shows us is where visitors are coming from, where they're going, what they're doing. So for instance, that kind of W looking one is Bear Valley. These are a few of our location, our points of interest that we track. But you can see how we can tell people are there, obviously in the winter to ski. And then they kind of July come up for maybe the music festival, then it kind of dies down and then it goes back up again in the wintertime. So some of what we market obviously is our outdoor beauty, natural beauty, Calaveras Big Trees, the caves, hiking, camping, fishing, biking, the snow sports, and then our events like Frog Jump obviously coming up, Lumberjack Day and Grape Stomp. We also like to talk about our innovative and award-winning lodgings. So like CB Properties, they're working on getting more lodging to come in and more workforce housing. Postarity Cider Works in Moke Hill with, they're at two Michelin star restaurants. And then Hinterhouse, they're winning international and national awards in their industry awards. And as well as the community theater and the music and concert scene. The way that we market is a breakdown, the print ads, Sactown Magazine, USA Today, Marin Magazine, Yosemite Guide, The Pine Tree, NorCal Beer and Wine Magazine, it's an insert that goes to 13 different newspapers in Northern California. So the San Francisco Chronicle, the San Jose Mercury News and so forth. The TV and radio, we have ads with NPR. We did two shows with Jeremy Moppen of PBS, he's sort of like a Hugh How, may I say his name? Hugh Howard, I can't say his name properly, thank you. Sort of like that. But two shows that he did were, one last year was the fair and then the other was PAWS, Angels Camp Museum. We also took over the KCRA homepage for four spring events last year. Travel influencers and writers, we had Tom Lomar of NPR, other travel writers there, Randy Yagi is with, he's a national travel writer for CBS. We had nine Black travel writers from the Black Travel Writers Alliance come through. And Voyage Voyage is a magazine in France, so we're also hosting international travel writers. We're getting that exposure. Community events, we've invested our COVID standings, the rest of it, in sponsoring community events. We've also attended community events. I can say that the first weekend in December was 24 hours of Christmas because we were in Murphy's. And then I was in Valley Springs and then I was in Angels Camp and it was a blast, it was wonderful. But we are also working on bringing back events like the March 20 West Festival and Taste of Calaveras with the Calaveras Wine Grape Alliance. Just, and just to kind of expand on that a little bit, we found that the events are a huge draw to people to come up to the county and visit. Our unique events are, that's what's looked at most on our website as well as the outdoor attractions, so Calaveras Big Trees and the caves. So then our, again, our visitor's guide, we distribute 50,000 copies and approximately 80,000 are downloaded from the website. The visitor's guide is, it's a pay to play. Essentially, those who want to be in it and support it are in it. So if anyone's interested, they, please contact me. We'd love to have, include everyone that wants to be involved. But our digital marketing, we do have free online listings for all tourism-based organizations. So again, if you're interested in having that, it's free, please contact me. I'd love to get that up for anybody who doesn't have that going. We create 48 blogs per year and 28 to 31 social media posts per month. We now have social media in-house as of July, we're doing that through our office. And the blogs and the social media focus on itineraries, the community events, outdoor attractions, individual industries and the personal connections. People like to see Mike Croshaw from Angels Market, for example. Continuing education, our, the executive director attends up to three of these main conferences, the Outlook Forum, One West and One Tech Summit, which, One West Tech Summit, which I will be going to since I'm now doing the social media and I'll be attending that in March. And these conferences are all run by Visit California and the One West Tourism Alliance. The Film Festival, or excuse me, the Film Commission hosted and sponsored the Wild and Scenic 2024 Film Festival. We also had Property Brothers come in with HGTV, Homestead Rescue with the Discovery Channel, Ranch America on the Outdoor Channel. And then in May of 2025, we'll have the Forest and Wildfire Film Festival. I also want to take the opportunity to thank Administration CEO Hitchcock, Kathy Galino with the Econ Development for streamlining the film permitting process. It's made things a lot easier. So 2025, we want to continue to increase the awareness locally, domestically and internationally of what Calaveras has to offer, collaborate with local lodging partners and businesses to create programs and packages to encourage extended stays and invest time and CVB funds into local events and continue to look for innovative and successful ways to market the county. Much of our success is due to the partnerships we have with these organizations. We are partners with, or we're now partnering with Michelle Plotnick with the Ebbets Pass Scenic Byway this year. And the, our executive director is working with Alpine County to get some TOT funding for the Ebbets Pass Scenic Byway marketing from Alpine County. So as with all of our partnerships, the goal, other than marketing, Calaveras is to reduce duplicative. is to reduce duplicated work and make efficient use of our resources. Our focus now going into twenty-five is to invite the engaged visitors to come to Calaveras to visit safely, respectfully, and responsibly while creating lifetime memories for them and maintaining the unique quality of the, of life that we find here in Calaveras. With that, try to answer questions.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Yes, thank you.
We, we've, uh, gone back and forth over the years, so I'll try to keep this as smooth as possible, out of respect. I, this started some years ago, as you're familiar with, of us on the west side with, with our, uh, perspectives that, you know, the services were more on the east side, which, you know, is a fact. But beyond that, um, you had stepped it up. I think that, you know, as an outlook for the people on the west side of the county, um, you should state more of what you actually do do over there because you, uh, say like lumberjack days. I mean, you stayed in Moke, you, you left two districts completely out of this, uh, District One and District Five. Uh, but I do know that you showed up and helped support the Rage and Cajun Festival.
As well as the, uh, Christmas, the Valley Springs Christmas Parade and Craft Fair.
And those are both things that you do do, but they're not here. And that's part of selling Calaveras County as a whole that we requested. So I do know you did it. I'm not saying you aren't doing it. But part, part of that is continuing to put it on the face along with the rest of the county. And I would hope, I would see that, and that would help me when I made my decision at the end here on whether T O T taxes are going. Because we definitely are, so to say, the relevant stepchildren of the county.
I, I am making, um, a very concerted effort to, um, include a lot of more on social media. I hope that you're, you're seeing that. Um, I personally am going in.
A certain degree, um, but, you know, when you write this out, and just this, this kind of portrays what you put on social media and your, your website, to a certain degree, because that's where you are. So don't forget those and put them up there. And then that's, that's all I'm saying. You know, because you do make an effort, you made a concerted effort. And, you know, this would, this would take it the extra mile that I'm looking for.
Thank you for your presentation. It was very well done. Um, I kind of echo what Supervisor Stopper has to say. It'd been kind of nice to put, uh, the Valley Springs Craft Fair and Parade in here and just acknowledge the west end of the county and those districts that you are there. It's out there for the people, um, much like you're advertising here. Um, so although I thank you, you guys do a fantastic job. You really do a good job in promoting Calaveras as a whole. So thank you.
Public comment? Or Ms. Fuldorff, real quick, did you have anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is Christopher Budner, publisher of CalaverasTwentyTwentySixElection.com. In previous appearances before the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, while addressing matters specifically related to the Calaveras Visitors Bureau, being the recipient of public funds sourced from county transient occupancy taxes, I've been critical of the C V B's persistent misportrayal of its economic benefits to the county and its statistical manipulations employed to sidestep facts behind the county's annual tourism revenue stagnation. The C V B's repeated boasts of having produced outstanding economic value and returns relative to the county's T O T investment appear to routinely minimize or dismiss annual inflationary impacts that would otherwise be calculated utilizing the federal government's Consumer Price Index for inflationary adjustment. The fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget cycle will soon take center stage during several springtime Board of Supervisors meetings. According to ledger reports I've received from County Council in response to my public records requests, cumulative T O T contributions dispersed from Calaveras County's Treasury to the C V B far exceeds two million dollars since mid-two thousand and nineteen, when current Calaveras County Board of Supervisors Chair Martin Hubbardey assumed the role as C V B's Executive Director. It is unacceptable that Martin has been holding two full-time positions. One is fully funded by the taxpayers and the other partially funded by taxpayers. I intended to be standing at this podium requesting Martin provide written evidence of a very specific statement appearing in the July tenth, twenty twenty-four C V B Board of Directors Meeting minutes. That statement I'm now quoting is, "Visit California says inflation does not affect those numbers." Instead, I just want to hear Martin announce today that he's resigning as the Executive Director of the Calaveras Visitors Bureau, that he may focus his full attention on the demands of the role of twenty twenty-five Calaveras County Board of Supervisors Chair. Notably, one of those demands is the daunting reality that all four of last term's continuing incumbent supervisors, with Martin leading the charge, are now under state scrutiny, having all concurrently been subjects of Open and Pending Fair Political Practices Commission cases for an assortment of campaign finance violations of the Political Reform Act. My name is Christopher Budner, publisher of CalaverasTwentyTwentySixElection.com. Thank you.
Stacy, would you please give my statements to everybody on the desk? Thank you. Galina?
Good morning, Vice Chair Stopper and Honorable Board. Kathy Galino, Economic and Community Development. Jessica, thank you so much for the work you do. Um, we've traveled many places from Love Creek to Valley Springs. Love the article about the horse trails, the equestrian trails we have around our lakes. I'm a horsey girl. Um, and also want to share that the C V B has also worked with the Parks and Rec Commission, uh, in providing access to their calendar. So we now calendar local parks and recreation, events that are happening, Little League signups, soccer signups. It's a great partnership, um, with the other agencies and parks and recreation. So thank you.
Swan after my heart. Thank you.
Yes, very excited to partner with that.
Any further public comment? Bring, bring this back to the board. Um, you know, it's just an update, informational item. Is there any further things? I mean, I for one, you know, voicing the concerns, but thank you for the work you've done. We have seen progressive steps in representation. I do want to acknowledge that. Um, love to see more. That's where I'm going with it.
Thank you.
I'll hand it back to you, Mr. Martin. Thank you very much, Supervisor Stopper. So we'll move on to item fifteen. Madam Clerk.
Item fifteen, action item, Behavioral Health. One, receive a presentation from the Mental Health Advisory Board. Two, accept the annual report of the Calaveras County Mental Health Advisory Board for the period of January one, twenty twenty-four, through June, I'm sorry, through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. And three, approve updated twenty twenty-four bylaws.
Hi, my name is Mark McCormick. I'm the chairperson of the Behavioral Health Advisory Board. Worked for Calaveras County Behavioral Health for a lot of years, as a therapist first, and then as a supervisor. And I've been retired for about five years. Um, so, uh, here today to, uh, discuss the annual report and the bylaws. And, uh, we're a board that's, we're mandated, uh, to develop an annual report as part of reviewing, um, with Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, um, the performance and the needs of behavioral health. And, um, really happy to be a part of this. Um, I think this is, uh, such an important, uh, area of need in the county. And, um, you know, it's really important to review what Calaveras County Behavioral Health is doing. So, um, kind of broken this down in regard to, um, review of the board and review of the, uh, agency. Uh, with, with the review of the agency really being the key. Um, basically, um, I really feel good about our board. Um, we, I think we have the right amount of numbers, and we've been able to get... Proposition one came in, um, over the last year, and it encourages, uh, local boards to have, uh, representatives from, uh, the educational system of, um, a young adult member who is a consumer, uh, call it transitional age youth. And, um, there's always been an encouragement to have somebody involved with veteran services, and we're able to get, uh, those people. And I think we have a good board made up of both interested community members and consumers and family members who, um, really, um, have some interest and, and awareness in behavioral health. And so, um, I won't go into our issues a lot in the interest of time. But again, you can ask questions at the end. I'm really wanting to focus on behavioral health as an agency. Um, and I think two of the things that kind of jump out for Calaveras County Behavioral Health is that, uh, one, the challenge of being a rural mental health program in a rural county, uh, where the state is looking at all these counties and developing programs based on not only L.A. and huge counties, but, you know, counties like San Luis Obispo County that have just a, a lot more people, a lot more money, a lot more services. And, um, I think one of the struggles of a small county is you only have so many administrators, so many therapists, so many people to do, um, a limited amount of, you know, an extensive amount of work with just a few people. So it's a challenge. And I think it's also a challenge to be one of the agencies that, um, is both, uh, kind of a mix of county and state, uh, directed. Um, and, and there's challenges within that. Um, so one big strength that I see that has been happening there for a lot of years, and, and has been continued on by Director Wendy and, and the staff is, there's, uh, great creativity, there's thinking outside the box. And I think that, um, that is how the agency has really been able to work well on doing a lot of things despite limited clinical services. And some of that is with the, uh, Behavioral Health Services Act. Um, so, uh, as we go to accomplishments, um, there's just a wealth of accomplishments that the program has done. Um, and I won't go into a lot of specifics, but, um, there's just a tremendous amount of programs that I mentioned, uh, as part of the Behavioral Health Services Act. Um, and it's just a, a great, uh, law that offers funding to just provide help in a variety of services, both, uh, ongoing treat, uh, service-wise, and also with a lot of prevention and help with other agencies. There's, um, a lot of new and ongoing programs. Um, you know, one of the biggest, which is just in processes, is, um, having, uh, funds now to, to build a new building, which is, uh, it's after so many years, and it's just a tremendous thing, and that's moving forward. And then there's a, um, the Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Project, which, um, offers funds for housing for, uh, consumers who might be homeless, um, or at risk of homelessness. And right, you know, as you know, there's not a lot of, of housing for, uh, low-income people in the, in the community, um, other than maybe short-term. And, uh, Calaveras County Behavioral Health does, uh, through this project, does work with the short-term solutions, uh, such as rentals, uh, assistance, um, and both in and out of county, uh, homes and a motel. Um, and they're, you know, hoping to get more long-term, um, housing solutions through this. And, uh, again, there's a variety of programs within that category. Um, I think all of these programs have, uh, uh, one of the real, uh, accomplishments is a wonderful collaboration with a lot of agencies. And, um, that includes Sheriff's Department, um, the Educational Services, uh, obviously, Health and Human Services, and, um, just a variety of programs through the Behavioral Health Services Act programs. So, um, and I think they're doing the best they can with, with what they have, um, including staffing successes. Um, I, I think that despite, um, some of the difficulties in getting staff, um, they're using, um, basically, they have, uh, offered, been able to get for the first time in years a, an onsite psychiatrist. Um, and they, they have two interns. They, um, have contracted with telehealth. And, um, they, you know, have incentives for the staff around funds through, um, the Behavioral Health Services Act in regard to, um, uh, offering help with their, um, college education costs. So that, that's great. Um, I'm, I'm really wanted to focus a little more on, on challenges and, um, some of our recommendations. I think one of the things that is, is the biggest thing to mention is, um, there were, uh, there are administrative leaves of absences, uh, over two thousand and twenty-four. And I think, um, you know, as a board, um, we only know so much about the reasons for that and really probably should only know, um, that. But, um, what we do know is that we could see this was an impact when, particularly when, uh, Director Wendy was on leave of absence, it was a great impact on their staff. There were a lot of questions, a lot of confusion, a lot of rumors, um, and a lot of stress. And, um, we as a board had some of that, not to that degree, obviously, but, but some of the same kind of questions, you know, what's going on, what's happening is, you know, are we going to have this, uh, you know, something new, you know? Uh, what are the reasons for this? What are we missing? Those kind of questions. So, uh, the hope is that that gets worked out, however, uh, that can happen, um, so that the staff continues to move on, and that doesn't get in the way of, uh, any of their work. Um, and one of the, the pluses, which is a recommendation, but really more of a, of a positive, is that, uh, the agency is working on, uh, developing a lot of programs to encourage staff cohesion and, um, improve staff, um, functioning that way. So I think that's really good. Um, I think possibly one of the reasons, uh, for the leave of absence, there's, there's been a lack of administrative, in our minds anyway, um, a lack of administrative... lack of administrative, in our minds anyway, a lack of administrative communication and transparency between the HHSA Director and the Director of Behavioral Health. And I think particularly on, on fiscal and budgeting issues. And we, we sort of saw that in regard to not getting some of our needs met in regard to, as, as a board, we want to know what's going on enough to truly make some good decisions and input on how the agency's functioning. And we weren't able through the years to get as clear of a picture on, you know, what, what were, how was, were the contracts going, you know, how, how things move fiscally. And part of the issue is that information wasn't moved down to, to the Director. And so in our minds, that gets in the way of, of her ability to, you know, make decisions for the agency, knowing the, the funding. And so we would hope that that, there's a remedy that way. For example, you know, at some point, the fiscal division, at least some of it was with Behavioral Health, and there was a lot more coordination when, when that model was happening. There was a lot more coordination between Behavioral Health staff and particularly the Director and fiscal staff. So there was, you know, it was easier to make decisions clinically, and the staff knew a lot more of what was going on. It might be something to consider going back to that. And, you know, another recommendation was, basically, there's this Evergreen Solutions review that's going on with HHSA, and of course Behavioral Health is part of that, and that this issue just be looked at specifically as part of that review process. The other big issues, one is just this ongoing issue with just a shortage of clinical therapists. And we have talked about this for the last few years that I've given the, the annual reports. And it's, it's basically the same reasons, you know, that have been exacerbated by the pandemic. You know, there's, there's less people in the field, there's, Behavioral Health is a very difficult position, and it's, a lot of people decide they'd rather move into private practice, they'd rather go to a private nonprofit agency, they'd rather get more money in an urban area, there's all these reasons. And, but I think the most important thing is what can Calaveras County do about that. And our hope is that salary increases be looked at, incentives like, like occur with Sheriff's Departments, and things like, you know, some kind of additional funds for moving to a new area, that, that kind of stuff. And we, we support the, the agency continuing to look at telehealth services, even though there's a lot of work to be done with that, there's a lot of kinks to be worked out. But, and also to look at private nonprofit agencies, there's, one of the great coordinations with the school is the wellness program at various schools, and that's done through Behavioral Health Contracting with Sierra Child and Family Services, a private nonprofit agency. And we've worked with them, or the agencies worked with them a lot over the last 10 years, maybe, and they've offered great services. And also, there's less private therapists in the community that are doing minimal medical services. There's been a loss in that, and that needs to be looked at. And also along with that, and maybe just as important or more important, is the, there's a shortage of, of mid-management supervision clinicians, supervising clinicians who play a big role in regard to supervising, particularly unlicensed clinicians, but they offer the day-to-day supervision. And for a long time, there were two in addition to the, to the Director, and now, now there's none. And so that, that's a real limit, and I think it puts the agency at risk for not having enough licensed supervision, and it puts a great burden on the Director who has, has to, you know, be available. I mean, she's going to be available for a lot of crisis situations anyway, but the day-to-day other, you know, less serious issues that might come up. And if, when she has to deal with that, it takes her away from all the other things. So I think that's, that's our recommendations on that mainly, and it'd be the same things, you know, reaching out to, well, basically, doing whatever it takes to get people, maybe doing part-time, maybe doing even a certain amount of phone supervision, although that's not ideal because it's not onsite. So that's our recommendations at this point, and I thank you for letting us do that. I think I'll take questions on that before we move on, if you have any.
Does the board have any questions? Do we have any public comment? So if this is an action item, do I have a motion?
Well, we got a few things here. We got the bylaws. The rest is pretty much informational item. So the way I'm reading it is the bylaws are what we're voting on?
Oh, correct, correct, correct.
Oh, do you want me to go into the bylaws next then?
Unless someone has a question out there.
Yeah. I was, sorry, I was doing it all in one fell swoop. Do you have any issues?
No, I don't have any issues with the bylaws, as I saw on the packet.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, if we're, if we're fine with the bylaws, I'll make a motion to approve the bylaws.
I would definitely approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corrigan.
Okay, in closing, I, I also just wanted to take the moment to thank Supervisor Gary for all your work with us over the last three years, and really appreciate that. And also, we're, wanted to thank Supervisor Ben for your involvement at least one time this year and your help. Appreciate that, and want to welcome you Supervisor Martin to our, our board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
So we'll move on to item number 16.
Item 16, action item, Public Works, select a slogan for the Clean California, Keep Calaveras Clean Project.
Supervisor, Mr. Chair, Supervisor, whoever you, before we get started.
Do you need to take a break?
No, I, I would like to pull this item off the agenda.
Oh, okay.
I, I think it's only fair because of the COG Board, and COG is very involved in this in getting the grants to do the monuments. I think it's only fair, they have a meeting coming up on Wednesday.
Okay.
Next Wednesday, not tomorrow, but to give them a chance to weigh in on this and possibly forward their, some of their recommendations on what we should look at for the, for this naming of the, or the slogan for the Keep Calaveras Clean Project.
How does the board feel about that?
I, the chair of the COG, I will, whatever.
What Carrie said.
Yeah. If my board member is recommending that, I'm not going to counter it, it's not that could be, I'm not going to comment on it, if it, other than I will support if it needs to get on the agenda, and I will just need to modify the agenda for next week, if that day be the case.
I think we've already talked to Melissa about it, and we'll, we'll bring it back. Since it's next Wednesday, we'll be able to get it back on the agenda for our next board meeting.
Thank you.
So I just have a question for Kelly. Is there any issue with continuing this item to a future board meeting?
Absolutely not.
All right, perfect.
This was a grant that the Department of Public Works applied for, so I, and we're happy to present in front of the COG Board. I just, this is my board to bring this to, so.
Great, thank you. So we'll pull it and bring it back.
Sure, I support that too.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, we'll be tabling this to the February 11.
Yeah, I think technically, we should have a motion to continue it.
Right.
Okay.
So if someone wants to make a motion, then then.
Do you make that motion?
Yes, I make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero. Thank you, Kelly. We'll move on to item number 17. Madam Clerk?
Item 17, ordinance building, conduct a public hearing, adopt an ordinance repealing sections 17.17.090C and section 17.18.080C of the Calaveras County Code to remove zoning code references to the repealed cannabis background clearance badge program. Authorize a summary publication at the ordinance, find ordinance exempt from CECL.
Doug.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board, Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. What I bring to your board is a very simple cleanup item in our ordinance code, but there's a couple of areas that could be a little confusing, so I want to give you just a very brief rundown of, of the process of how we got here. Essentially, this item.
Excuse me, I'm supposed to open a public hearing, so we're opening a public hearing. Thank you, apologize.
So this item ran concurrently with the previous item your board voted on to repeal the cannabis background clearance badges. However, this had to take a separate process because these two separate ordinance codes were in the zoning ordinance, which requires a path through the Planning Commission. So your Planning Commission heard this item on February 22nd of last year, and they considered the resolution to repeal these two code sections. However, at the time, the new zoning ordinance had not been adopted, and those code sections read as 1791-090C and 1795-080C. So the, the Planning Commission passed that resolution to your board, and then the zoning ordinance changed, so it went to 1717 and 1718 respectively. So that, that might be a little of a confusion there. The language, however, has not changed. Those ordinance codes read identical to the previous code sections, and therefore, the, the path is intact. We did not bring this item to your board with the last board item for the CBCV repeal because it was felt at the time, Riley, so that should we have brought this forward on the same day and the first item be struck down, then we'd be bringing you something that didn't need to be brought forward. So council wisely indicated we should hold off on that, so we're bringing it to you today. Essentially, this is a repeal of two code sections that merely say that if you're going to be a retailer or a cannabis cultivator, you are required to adhere to 9.22, which no longer exists. So what you'd be voting on is simply cleaning up ordinances that direct you to nowhere. So that's, that's essentially the, the long and short of it. If there's any questions. I would like to say that I was working with the Planning Department on this for the entire path through to this point, and our planning directors in the back there, if you have any questions for him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board?
Just thank, thank you for the cleanup work, appreciate it.
Is there any other comment on this issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
Before there's a motion, I would just like to say, at least ask the two board members that prior voted against doing away with the badges and then came back and brought it back and voted to do it, before we vote on this and eliminate it, I would like to ask if you guys would bring it back and rethink what you're doing about eliminating badges. If you're not, I'm, I'm going to vote no on this because of the fact I don't, I disagree. I think the badges was a good program. I thought it made it safe for everybody with the community, with some of these farms that are close by homes, so.
Thank you, Supervisor. I, I for one will stick with my vote, and I appreciate your concern, and thank you for bringing it up, but I, I will stick with my vote.
If, does anybody else have anything to say? I'll make a motion.
I apologize for interrupting, you may have said, did you close the public?
I have to close them. Close them, public.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion supporting, supporting the cleanup and removal of this in all ordinances, as, as he stated, because I don't know if I can repeat it the proper way.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Four, one. Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Chairman, before we go to the next item, can we take a five-minute?
We'll have a five-minute break.
Or 10 minutes, whatever.
Okay, thank you. And now we're on to our final informational item, number 18. Madam Clerk?
Item 18, informational item, planning, provide staff with policy direction for development of the short-term vacation rental ordinance.
Thank you. Turn it over to Peter and Brett.
Good morning, thank you. Peter Maurer, Special Projects Administrator. For a few more weeks. So when I came on as the interim director in April, one of the assignments that I got was to prepare a short-term vacation rental ordinance. I believe it was something that former Director Elliott was working on. I inherited that, working with the building department, fire chiefs, county council, we created a draft ordinance and put it out for public comment and review as long, together with a draft environmental document. We got comments, lots of comments. And there are very, very productive comments, a lot of issues. In the, since then, we've met several times, Supervisors Huppertie and Follendorf, both county council and the CEO, to say, okay, well, how do we respond to these comments? And there are some significant policy issues that need to be addressed. And rather than us write up something and then to hear, oh, no, we don't want to do that, we're going to reverse that order, let's hear what you, board, as the policymakers want to do, and then we will craft the ordinance based on that direction. This is similar to what we've done previously on different controversial topics. I remember having a long workshop similar to this with the cannabis ordinance several years ago, so been there and done that, and so this will be a good opportunity to get feedback from the board, so that when we come back with the draft ordinance, it'll be at least in the general direction of, you know, what you want us to prepare as well, you know, there, there's likely to be, you know, tweaks and changes that will need to be made to the process, but we want to have the general direction. You know, there's likely to be, you know, tweaks and changes that will need to be made to the process, but we want to have the general direction given to us today. So I've sort of gone over, you know, the issues. There's a list of questions I'd like to go through, but I would suggest if there's general questions that you want to ask us now, then I would suggest turn it over to the public, get their input before we then come back and discuss each of these issues. And there may be other issues that we haven't thought of that you want to bring up, give us direction on that. So do you have any questions of us at this point?
Would the Board like to jump in?
I think, I think listening and hearing what they have to say first, and then, you know, I can throw my crowbar inside the spokes after that.
Okay.
Yeah. Brett, you think I should wait then as well?
I think that's a good idea to hear from the public, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, so we'll go to public comment.
Could I just make the general public comment? On one hand, you're saying these are...
One moment, one moment. If you could come up to the podium first, thank you. Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you. Janet Romanowski with Murphy's Vacation Homes. A general comment is, if, if you guys have kind of talked about questions and have things out here, I think most of us are working off kind of the draft ordinance from before, and I don't know what you've come up with to say, oh, you're right, that makes no sense. So it's a little hard for us to put in comments on something that we're going to find out later. You guys have already decided it made no sense. So my suggestion would be to kind of go the opposite way. I mean, that makes more sense to me, to know what you guys have already changed, because, or decided against, because it sounds like you've got some comments there.
I think we should go ahead and get the rest of the public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the Board, and then if we need to, we'll go back to the public.
Okay, my name's Kelly Stellar. I'm with Cedar Creek Realty. I own offices in Arnold and in Murphy's. I've been in the vacation rental business for twenty-five years, right here in Calaveras County, specifically up in Arnold. We do have some serious concerns about this proposal's practicality and its potential unintended consequences to our community. I understand the desire for oversight for the STRs, but we need to be realistic about what our county can effectively manage. The county is, is already facing significant workforce challenges. Adding a complex permit, permitting process would place an unreasonable burden on an already stretched staff. The sheer volume of STRs in our county would make timely permit processing nearly impossible. Delays would frustrate property owners and potentially cost our county valuable tourism revenue. We're looking at creating a bottleneck that could harm both property owners and our local economy. Perhaps most concerning is the impact on our Arnold cabin community. Many of those cabins, while perfectly safe and having hosted visitors for years, might not meet the strict technical requirements of the proposed permit system, simply due to their age and original construction date. This creates an untenable situation where responsible property owners might be forced to either stop renting entirely or continue operating outside the system, which would dramatically affect the TOT revenue. The county stands to lose significant TOT revenue, funds that are relied for essential services. Let me emphasize the broader economic stakes we're dealing with. Our community's lifeblood is tourism. It's not just a part of our economy, it is our economy. Many of our residents have built their livelihoods around the STR market, from property management to cleaning services to maintenance work. If this permitting system forces STR owners to close their doors, the ripple effects would be devastating. Our local businesses, restaurants, shops, service providers, all depend heavily on the steady stream of visitors that STRs bring to our area. Bear Valley Ski Resort, a cornerstone of our tourist economy, relies on having adequate lodging options for its guests. If we reduce our STR inventory through overly restrictive permitting, we're not just affecting individual property owners, we are threatening the very foundation of our local economy. There are several specific aspects of STR management that have been raised: guest limits, noise concerns, and local contact requirements. The county has already acknowledged that occupancy numbers haven't been a significant issue in our community. The current self-reporting maximum through our online TOT registration system has proven adequate. There's no need to complicate a system that is working. Now, I'm going to turn this over to Jesse. That's going to, he will address noise and whatnot.
Thank you, Jesse.
Good morning, Board. Jesse Gibbs. I own Century Twenty-One CR Properties, which also has offices in Arnold, Murphy's, and Angels Camp. So some of the other concerns we've had regarding noise and neighborhood disturbances, while we appreciate the intent behind implementing fines for repeat offenders, we need to consider the practical challenges of enforcement. Monitoring and documenting these complaints would require additional resources our county just doesn't have. Instead of creating an unwidely enforcement system, we should focus on strengthening our existing ordinance, ordinances that apply equally to all properties, whether they are rentals or not. As for the requirement for local contact person, we agree that having someone within the county who can quickly address issues makes sense. However, the proposed method of mandatory neighbor notification is problematic. Forcing owners to distribute contact information to all neighboring properties could create an unnecessary tension and potentially lead to harassment situations. We should trust property owners to manage their relationships with their neighbors as they see fit. Many responsible owners already share their contact information with neighbors they trust. This organic approach maintains community harmony better than any mandatory system could. Adding the local contact information to the online registration process should suffice for this. Another concern, and one that we just want to make sure is addressed because there's critical misconception about housing availability, some have suggested that short-term rentals would, or restricting short-term rentals would somehow increase our full-time rental housing stock. This fundamentally misunderstands the nature of our mountain community real estate market. The reality is that most properties in our Upper Highway Four area are second homes, significant investments that their owners have specifically chosen for occasional personal use in short-term rentals. These aren't properties that would naturally convert to long-term rentals. The economic simply, the economics simply don't work. Mortgages, and we know how fire insurance has gone up, payments on these high-value properties far exceed what our market could support for a long-term rental. And in regards to zoning, many of our residential areas, especially up in Arnold, already are self-regulated through HOA policies. Numerous associations have already made their own determinations about short-term rentals, either restricting or prohibiting them entirely. This demonstrates that our community already has effective mechanisms in place for managing rental activities at the neighborhood level. We should continue to respect the authority of HOAs to make these decisions for their specific communities, rather than imposing one size fits all for a county. And last, we'll have Jamie.
Good morning. Sorry, I'm just getting a little cold, but I'm Jamie here on El Poros. I'm an agent for the last twenty years in Arnold and a lifelong Arnold resident. And I just kind of wanted to wrap up with a couple of last thoughts here. I think it's important that we look at the historical perspective. Short-term rentals have been a fundamental part of our community for over half a century. While we experienced an unprecedented surge during the COVID years, as did many vacation destinations, our rental market has naturally regulated itself back to normal seasonal patterns with minimal community impact. The reality is simple. Our current registration system with the TOT Board works. It provides the necessary oversight while maintaining the flexibility our community needs. We don't need to fix what isn't broken, we need to preserve what is working. Our community has successfully managed vacation rentals for over fifty years. Let's not dismantle decades of successful community practice with unnecessary regulation. The simple proven solution is right in front of us. Maintain our current registration systems, preserve our community's character, and continue the traditions that have served us well for generations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. So do we have any, oh, Janet?
Thank you. I'm Janet Romanowski. My husband and I have Murphy's Vacation Homes. When we first came to Murphy's twenty-five years ago, the choice was to stay at the Murphy's Hotel. And I don't know if any of you guys have stayed in, I think it's room twelve, right above the bar? Where you hear all the good lines of people heading out at two o'clock in the morning. It's not, it wasn't the best in terms of lodging. We couldn't bring our dog. It was just not great lodging, but that made us decide that we wanted to buy in this community, so that's what we did. So we've been in this community for a long time, excuse me, a long time. About nine years ago, we made a decision that we would take the property and convert it, convert part of it into a vacation rental. Now, we went through all the processes that we had to do, through the Planning Department, all the things that they wanted to see. In that nine years, we've since added three other properties, so four properties. We have never had a complaint about noise. We've never been called in for a problem from a neighbor. All the neighbors know us. We're very responsible. My concern is, you have an ordinance here that is going to get the people that are kind of the, the bad ones, the ones that cause the problems, the ones that park all the boats and vehicles, or whatever this is talking about. You're going to get those in the net, but you're also going to get people that really are good landlords, good vacation property managers, that take a responsibility in this. I know for myself, you know, we take pride in ours. We are not slum lords. We take very good care of our guests. One of the things when I look through this is, what she talks about is going back to square one and having people go back through the process. I think what we're going to find, and I don't know the areas outside of Murphy's, but for example, in downtown Murphy's, you have older homes, they were done with small bedrooms, oftentimes no closet. You also have parking issues. You have very small lots, some that don't have any parking. So we've all kind of made do, and you park as best you can. I will tell you, we have parking for our guests, so that's not an issue. I'm not up here to try to say we shouldn't do that. But I'll go, I'll take a look at something you said on the original draft was, on one hand, you say there will only be one vehicle per bedroom, and then you talk about a capacity. So for example, if you say it's a four-bedroom and you're going to park four vehicles, then when I have my book group that comes back every year, it's four women, they don't mind sleeping in the same bed, they're not on couches, they all want to drive separate cars, they're coming from different parts of the state. But you're telling us here we can only have four vehicles, and there's a parking capacity. That's going to be a problem, and I think also just the whole thing about saying that people have to park off-street. Drive in downtown Murphy's and look at some of the rentals, there's no way they can comply. And when you look at that, so what we're going to do is we're going to lose rentals. Oftentimes, those little cottages that have no parking, that might have the small bedrooms, are some of the most affordable vacation rentals.
Thank you, Janet. Thank you very much. I'll bring it back to the Board, and I'd like to jump in first and say that the majority of short-term rentals are in my district. And in reading the staff report, I stopped and asked myself, what's the objective here? Why did I want to, why did I agree to then say we need to look at a short-term rental ordinance? And the primary reason for me was safety, and that's not addressed in the staff report. I feel very strongly that the Upper Highway Four corridor evacuation is number one in the back of my head. And when CEO Hitchcock and I were at the RCRC meeting, we spoke with a woman who gave a presentation from Truckee. And one of the smartest things I heard her say was that visitors leave on a warning. And I think that, that for me, this, this registration certificate, however it's, however it comes together, I think our visitors need to know that they need to leave on a warning so that our constituents can then leave on a mandatory, and we're staggering it. I also think it's very important that we know that each and every, and these are all the good actors in the room. I mean, all of the evacuation information, the smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, I do think that there should be a self-registration process where all of that is signed off by the landlord. I do believe that with STRs, with Airbnb, the best policemen out there are the guests, because they report directly on Airbnb, how their stay was, what was good, what was bad. I do think that there are those things like garbage collection and making sure that people do park responsibly and not in the middle of the road, and if their driveway isn't plowed, that is an issue. But we have, we have locals that do it, and we also have second homeowners that do that as well. It don't, I go back to that phrase, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, and that's where I think Jamie was saying that as well. I do think it's important that we do have a system in place, that we continue to monitor, that we continue to build on, and just make sure that we have nothing but good actors. I know that you've also talked about who should be responsible or who should be getting that call. I think the supervisor of that district should be getting the call, because I can mitigate a lot of things by dealing directly with the people involved. I know, for example, Kelly ends up dealing with properties that she doesn't represent, because people call her thinking that that's one of their properties, and she deals with it. It don't, I mean, I, I want to back up what everybody said. This is a huge, huge issue for us, because ultimately, it is our, it's our bread and butter, and I don't want to do anything or impose anything that's going to create any kind of friction that would stop people. I know that Kelly was telling me, I think when we met Peter and CEO Hitchcock, that she'd already lost a sale because somebody thought that we were going to start regulating STRs, and that's not my intention at all. And I hope that the rest of the Board follows suit. And I also want to reiterate that even if we were to regulate STRs, there's no way that workforce housing is going to be able to afford these properties at this time. I do feel the noise ordinance is important. Of course, it always comes back to how do you, you know, enforce these? But I do think that they're a fine for people, and I do think that we need to look after our locals. We do have a lot of locals that have their own STRs, and, and I think if, of all the locals that I know that run their own STRs or run them through a company, I've never heard anything. It's, it's all the, the owners that live out of the county that don't, that aren't answering their phone at two o'clock in the morning when their, when their guests are making noise. So again, I guess, I'd like to make this as simple as possible, but I just, for my taste, I just want to make sure that everybody has the right evacuation information, and that the properties have the right smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, parking, and garbage collection. And for the most part, with these companies, they, they make sure that that happens. It's just to put it in writing so that the bad actors we can take action against. That's my two cents.
Um, if I may, sir?
Yeah, please.
Thank you, Chair. I, I agree when it comes to workforce housing and stuff, just, you know, homes that are selling for eight hundred thousand dollars up that corridor are going to be, you know, mortgages, four to five thousand dollars a month, if not more, with the fare plan included. So that's just not viable for someone that's in that area, with the majority of you being on the Highway Four corridor. And I will add that with the other industry I work in, when it comes to grants and stuff, with people that actually live there, the median household income is lower than in my district. So we're able to get grants for infrastructure up there, but not down in Rancho Calaveras per se, which really surprised me, you know, if you look at the two areas. That said, we don't, you know, with more hotels coming in, we still don't have enough for people when they come in the area. So to stymie it, I mean, they started putting Airbnbs down in Rancho Calaveras in areas, just so people could visit families and stuff. Looking at different ways, I don't want to shut any business down that's going right now with new rules after the fact. I wouldn't want to put them in a bad spot if they're, if they're a good actor. I completely agree. You know, if anything, I think that there needs, I, I agree with you, Martin. I can shorten up my whole thing, is I agree with you when it comes to safety, but to try to limit the industry or put people out of business at this time would not be beneficial to our community as a whole. I, but we, there's something I, that you didn't bring up is, the thought on parking, I think comes from, I apologize, Amanda, but from the Lake Tulok area, because they'll have people completely congest the street, to where people that live there can't get home. And it's navigating how we deal with that so that, you know, people can get home, much less if there is a fire, they can get out of the area so that cars aren't blocking their way. So I think that's another consideration.
I'm the only district currently that actually has a permitting process. I guess, for me, I have been happy with the way that county staff and the realtors and the homeowners and corporate have utilized dealing with the issues and the problem. I will disagree, I don't necessarily want those phone calls, it has been helpful to have that. have that property manager, and then dealing with the property manager, when things do elevate, and there had been a handful in copper, and then, and then working with the respective staff. But for the most part, I have found that when those phone calls come in, they're able to work on it locally, and I think that's the biggest thing, is just reinforcing the common sense. And some individuals are not having that common sense, and it's, I've liked the existing system, but I understand, and I know that plastering somebody's phone number all over, there can be some, there will possibly be some form of harassment. So, how we comb that in, I am open to supporting those ideas, but I don't necessarily want to be getting hit with those phone calls. I would, I have liked that middle person, however that works out. With the parking, I think the parking came into play because of trailers, really, with the boat launch. But I have seen when Supervisor Calaway was here, we discussed it, you know, there's just, some neighborhoods are still neighborhood that people live in, and they come home from work, and there's ten cars outside, and they can't even park in front of their house. And so, how that looks like with the parking, while I recognize in my district, it does have to do with the trailers, with the boat launch, I think we need to help, and that's been one of my number-one complaints that I've received, is how do you, how do you work with the parking situations in some of these places? And I get it, you know, in your district, there is no parking, but that doesn't mean that they shouldn't have the opportunity to find what that solution is. I, I have talked to some of your individuals in the public, I think in the initial start of this, there was definitely misinformation with this was going to solve our workforce housing. That was not my intent, I don't think that was the objective of where we were going with this, it was more, we've got complaints, we don't know how to hurdle them, and right now, the only process was in, in District 4, in the copper area, there was a process of how to deal with that, and get, and deal with the bad actors. And I think it opened up another set of why we're here today. I, so I know it won't solve the workforce housing, I know that's not part of this, and that is not my intent. And I do agree with the other two supervisors, I don't know, and we've talked at length about it, I don't think that, I don't know what it looks like, whether it's permitting, registration, I think we need to make it an easy, if we can, with change. No one likes change, it's gonna be a bump in the road to however this looks like, but adding unnecessary paperwork that doesn't need to be needed, I am open to what those look like. Is it a self-reporting versus a permit? Is it, you know, some other avenue? I am bound and open to those recommendations, and supporting that, that process. But just know, if I do say permitting, I'm gonna have to change my word, I'm just meaning, how do we recognize everyone? And then lastly, just, I do thank all of you for coming and being part of this, I know it has caused some of you some, some blood pressure going up and down, but thank you for your patience with working with us as individuals, and understanding what, what this can look like. I think we can build something that's successful, that helps everybody going forward. And one thing I pulled staff, I just don't like the fact that we've got one area of the county, and we do something, and then the rest of the county, there's nothing. And so what does that look like? How do we, how do we put those sideboards and expand it outside of just my district alone? Because it is confusing, I think we've had numerous issues in front of this board, where we've had to decide things, because there was an avenue to deal with those situations, and we need to, need to address them. And then the HOAs, I hear, I've got nine HOAs I deal with down in copper, they have expressed making sure that they do not wanna see this go away, they do understand, and I'm hoping the rest of the HOAs in the counties understand this, if they want something more restrictive, and they want to deal with it differently, then they need to deal with that in the CCNRs. That is not our responsibility, this is just a basic, simple, hopefully simple, but overview, and what they decide within their boards and their HOAs, it is their responsibility to do. And so I think that has been a confusion on some HOAs as well, where they want certain specific things, and that is not, that's not my goal, is to address that. If they wanna address that, they need to push that back, and be responsible within their own community to, to deal with that. So, anyways, I'm done.
Actually, I mean, could I add on to that? Because ultimately, whatever the CCNRs are, usurp whatever we have out there.
Correct.
So, so they can be more restrictive.
And that's what I'm saying, they have asked, some comments I've gotten from HOAs is, well, can you add this and that? It's like, no, that's not the intent of this, you want it more restrictive.
You do it.
You do it over the counties.
I'd also like to point out, too, that Lake Mont HOA has actually said in the past to me, that it's the second homeowners that are actually making more noise and more trouble too. So, the onus is not just on short-term rentals. You can't have five to 7,000 people come in for a concert and not have a place for them to stay. I mean, this is a huge part, as we say, of our economy. But I also, just one last time, wanna point out, the last time that we did an evacuation on Highway 4, it took an hour and a half for people to leave. And after we've seen all the video of Palisades and what have you, we just know how important it is. And so, again, I just wanna reiterate safety. Do we have, sorry Supervisor Toppin, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, this, you, both you and Amanda have the gist of all of this. Highway 4 corridor is basically where most of all the short-term rentals are. There are a few in District 5 down, there are a few in mine, but I have, I don't get any complaints, I haven't had any complaints really, on any short-term rentals, and any loud noises, or too many people there, or anything like that. But I, I think it's, it's very gonna, it's gonna be difficult to craft something, given all this information, just because of the differences in the areas. With Lake Tolic area, and it's close to the valley where people come up, and being on the board at the length of time that I have, I think most of the complaints that we've heard, and people have come and, public comments or whatever, has come from the Lake Tolic area. Not so much from Arnold area and up that way, there have been some. And, and most of those were the, the driveways going up to some of the areas in Arnold where the homes are, and short-term rental people were using the wrong driveways, or blocking the driveways, or, or whatever, because they go up and they're not supposed to. But that, that's an issue I don't think we can solve here with an ordinance. But I think it's gonna be very difficult, and, but I think it can be done, I think we can do what we can. There, there needs to be something in place, in case we do have explosions that come up, that we can fall back on. I'm with Amanda, the phone calls, I'm open to everybody could call me in my district, whatever, but I think there should be a route that it needs to go before it comes to the board, or comes to the supervisor. Much like a lot of other things, the general public goes through the areas, and when they don't get satisfaction to them, they, then they contact the supervisor.
Just to add to that real quick, cause I agree, I agree with you both, my immediate thought, Martin, was something to the sense of, it's like, when we, we get certain code compliance issues, it's forwarded to us as a supervisor, an email, and then, you know, at that point, it's up to the supervisor whether they're gonna talk to anybody or not.
Thank you.
Supervisor Randall? So, in District 2, it looks a little different, and I, I don't necessarily see this as a one-size-fits-all, I think that what works for Arnold and Murphy's, where most of our tourism is, in Lake Tolic, needs to be looked at differently than, say, Railroad Flat or West Point. We don't have a lot of tourism up there, we do have some STBRs. I know of one that's working great, it's the owners live on the same property, they regulate it themselves, it looks wonderful. To that effect, I was curious as why we're saying no ADUs. To me, that seems like almost a perfect opportunity in rural areas such as District 2, because you have the owners there to manage their own rental. Evacuation issues is also a very big deal up there. I visited a community just a couple weeks ago, that's one way in, one way out, of a very, you know, windy dirt road, and they have a new rental up there, short-term, and it's caused a lot of problems in that neighborhood. So I think that we need to look at this on a community basis, and, you know, I've gotten a ton of calls and emails with people on both sides, there's some that are doing it great, I'd like to reach out to some of the realtors in my district, and see about help such as you folks give in your areas. I think that could be a good outlet, and as a supervisor, I would be happy to also work with owners. I don't wanna put more work on our county, I don't want owners to feel threatened by having to post their numbers, but I think there has to be something in place to kind of regulate this.
Mary?
Sorry, one other, you know, one of my constituents that did reach out to me, was concerned about the noise, and what that puts on the sheriff's department with having to go out with their little noise odometer, and how effective or ineffective that really is.
There is traction on the west side of the county, I've heard, we know of people that ski at Kirkwood and stay on the west side of the county. It's great. So we'll hand it, oh, sorry.
Just a legal question for Sarah, cause we've been through this before with other ordinances, how's it making it, how, it's generally a lot more work, and not very simple to make a ordinance that's, for the county, that's different, for different areas, it applies differently?
Yes, it would, it could be complicated.
Very complicated at that point.
Which is not to say that it's not doable in some way, but yes, it would be complicated. And if I may, too, just on the ADU question, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that state law, there are prohibitions in state law for utilizing ADUs as short-term rentals because of the housing crisis, and looking for more long-term housing. So I think, I assume that's the reason why they were carved out here.
I would add, too, when we, we streamlined the ADU process in Calaveras County, we stated therefore, for that type of thing, so at the same time, it sort of conflicts with what we stated, why we were streamlining the ADU process here.
Yeah, I think.
Not that it's illegal, or for our reasons.
Right, I think our hands are tied to some extent, and that's the reason why that was drafted.
That's, that's correct, state law prohibited, when we updated our ADU ordinance in 2017, we included that prohibition in it, because it was required by the state.
So we'll hand it back to you.
Okay, well, that's some good general direction, I sort of get a sense of where you wanna go with it. So I guess the first, if we, maybe if you just turn to page 222 on your binder, there's a list of questions, some options, we can sort of go through those, discuss them, there's some recommendations that we have made, and if there's anything else in there we wanna talk about?
Page 222.
It says packet page.
Previous item on the menu.
Okay, well.
It's 232. That was him. Did you turn your mic off? I think the issue is that there's two different, the board, if you're accessing through yours, so it is in fact, page 222 of the public packet, it's, it's the first page of the staff report for this item.
232, okay. So the first question is, do we want a permit process or registration process? I think I've heard that answer pretty clearly, we don't wanna go through a lengthy, you know, permit process, I don't think the staff can handle it anyway. You know, on second thought, after looking at the first draft, you know, trying to process 700 permits, hearken back to the ordinance days of the canvas ordinance, and don't need to go through that again. So, we already have a registration process for the TOT tax, one of the things that we'll need to sort of figure out is, do we wanna register with the planning department, or do you want to have the registration continue through the treasurer tax collector? I don't think it really matters, and I think that it's something that probably the tax collector and the planning director can sort of work out without having, unless you as a body have a really strong feeling one way or the other about that.
May I just make a suggestion, Peter? Regardless, they'll have to go to the tax collector because of the TOT taxes and everything, and with so many different businesses in the Calaveras County, having to go all over the county and try to figure out what they're doing, let's try and keep it with one place, the tax collector, if that's okay by the tax collector. Check with her.
I think, we were, this was brought up at the strategic planning yesterday, and she's willing to take that on.
Excellent, excellent. So, so in that case, I think it's, it's best to keep it one place, and keep it simp, more simpler and streamlined, as opposed to other processes in the county, like a business license.
So the second question I had then, is where would we want to allow the short-term rentals? All residential zones, do we wanna restrict it from ag zones, or multifamily? I think that our recommendation would be that any zone that allows a single-family dwelling, that that would be where you could do this. I do have a concern about conversion of apartments, that is one of the few places we do have affordable housing, that those be converted to essentially a motel type of unit. I think there's also some building code issues that we need to address on that, so our recommendation would be that single-family homes, these can be used for vacation rentals, but not multifamily dwellings.
And I hear what you're saying, but we also have like condo units that could, just so that, cause there's condos that aren't necessarily in the affordable housing, or townhouse style, in, in certain instances, that I just wanna be open to other buildings that could be viewed as a multi-resident, and not restrict those. Mr. Oliver, am I, I saw him stand up.
They're all our chief building official. The, the building code has a significant distinction between single-family dwelling and a hotel. And multifamily housing, and, and converting that into a hotel is a significant leap as well. And the defining factor is whether it's transient lodging. And with a single-family dwelling, typically, if you have permanent lodging, you have one family, you have one level of hazard. You go to transient lodging, and you have one home that can house people transiently, so that's the public, but in maybe one family increments. As soon as you move a condominium with four or more dwelling units into the realm of transient lodging, now you have a lot of the public rotating through a building, and the level of potential hazard goes up dramatically. We have to classify any structure based on what it most closely resembles in the code. So when you make the leap from multifamily, as soon as you make a transient lodging, we have to classify it as a hotel, whereas with a house, it's a gray area. When you make a transient lodging, there's, there's, it's, it's only one family, one of them's rotating, one of them's not, there's, there's layers of code that we would have to sift out, which is why so many jurisdictions have made their own. There's layers of code that we would have to sift out to, which is why so many jurisdictions have made their own rules and said, this is the gray area, so here's where it's safe and here's where it's not. So I would be very cautious about entertaining any multifamily housing becoming transient lodging for any reason.
Could I ask you, how do B and Bs fit into this whole equation?
There's specific language in a bed, for bed and breakfast in the residential code and you're limited to the amount of units that can, or amount of sleeping units within that building and the owner has to live there. So there's a certain level of direct supervision and management, which reduces that risk. So that, there's clear direction in the building code for that. My two pennies.
I completely hear what you're saying and it makes sense. But in an instance of a townhouse where it's two units or certain condos, now condominium areas generally, there's a lot of units, but a condo can be a lot like a townhouse in the sense of how it's arranged. And you could have four condos in an area owned by four different people. And many times, they're used as such. So I agree when it gets over a certain number in an area, definitely. But when it's like up to four units in an area and it's not necessarily an apartment building or apartments, because there's some small apartments that are four units. I just have a hard time restricting those because some of those are built in areas, not necessarily a lot in Calveras, but there are certain areas where the intention is for turnover. So, you know, also we got, I mean transient. And so it's, that's where I'm having a hard time restricting it. I completely agree when we get a large apartment building and becomes transient, we don't want that. That's such a high flow of vehicles and then we have a road impact mitigation matter that we have to think of along with safety and everything else.
I'm just recommending caution and a lot more discussion and definitely bringing in our local fire chiefs into this because multiple occupancies, all switching, or the potential to have transient and permanent in the same building, it raises questions that we really need to explore.
I agree. At volume, I agree a hundred percent, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
It is, it is a thing.
It is. And we definitely have multiple units, townhomes in our district and my district.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So is there a consensus or direction from the board on how you want us to handle zoning and where where short-term rentals would be allowed or prohibited?
I don't see prohibitive. I mean, like you brought up ag and that would defeat the purpose of ag tourism. So, and so, I mean, come up with some ideas on the multi-units so we can look at them later from my perspective. I'm not sure what other supervisors have in mind.
I'd be interested to look at-
I'm fairly open on zoning when it comes to them, to it. I can't think of anything right offhand other than, you know, government, public land, probably shouldn't be used for Airbnb. It's the only one I'm suggesting, no.
We could bring in an extra income here.
I would just ask that we are specific with our ag uses as far as around ag tourism, opposed to just a random, you know, STVR on a big piece of land. Just kind of watch that and be specific on how we write it in.
For ag, Doug and I have had these conversations over the last couple of years. As long as we don't hit into a realm where we've got an idea with a whole like hip camp scenario, I really want to avoid that. But I'm open to, I mean, with like Ben said, we've got ag tourism, we're trying to promote that, so I'm fine with it.
All right, thank you. So the next question we have then is, just going down my list, is should there be a number or a limit on the number of guests? That's a tricky one, particularly as we will be moving more towards a registration process. We have no intention of inspecting and seeing how many guests are out there. So it's, you know, it's going to be dependent on the unique characteristics of the site. Do they have enough parking to accommodate eight vehicles? Is there enough bedroom space? And if someone wants to put in a loft full of bunk beds, you know, I guess that's up to the owner. But as long as the occupancy doesn't create a safety hazard, either by, you know, not enough exiting from the building or egress from the side or parking that's blocking a road, I don't personally see how the number of people there really makes a difference in the county. Except for sort of the spillover effect of more people, more noise, you know, more people, more vehicles, those kinds of things.
Peter, can I ask you, because we share friendship with a couple that live next door to a house that was built that accommodates 14 people. To me, that's a small hotel. How do you, I mean, how do you limit the number of people? I mean, in trucking, they do two people per bedroom plus two and they don't allow you lofts and they don't allow you play spaces.
And that's the standard we have in Tulok right now.
Right. And I don't know how we would ever even enforce that anyway. I mean, I guess if the noise ordinance, you know, people showed up, then you could actually say how many people were staying in the house. But, I mean, a house built to accommodate 14 seems like a B and B to me.
Yeah. Good question. I don't have an answer for you.
To answer that question, I think it's up to the people that own it or that are renting it out or the Realtors to take that responsibility on. I think, and Doug can correct me on this, this is open to the public. Once it's open to the public, there's laws, state laws and other restrictions on the number of people that are allowed and the size of a room or size of a home, because it is public now. It's just not your family and family members coming to visit or whatever. So it's up to us to protect the public on somebody saying, Doug, you correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're correct, sir. That's why I said that, you know, moving from permanent to transient lodging raises a lot of gray area issues. And one of them is occupancy of, not just the occupancy category of the building, but the number of people that can be in each space based on its use.
Correct.
The amount of people we expect to be in a kitchen per square foot versus a bedroom is different. In commercial, we have to look at, is this going to be for dining, assembly, you know, actually workshop. They all have different number of people per square foot, you know. So it can, but to be fair, when you apply the design of a residence, there isn't a lot of people you can fit. I think it's like 100, 100 square foot per person or something. You're not going to get a huge occupancy out of a home. But on the other side, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere about 23, 24 years ago, there was a court case and I want to, I piqued the interest of at least one attorney in the room, where it was, there was a code compliance case where they had a huge family in this building and the code compliance officer was enforcing the occupancy limits and it went to court and the judge determined, you can't tell a person how many people they can have in their family. Once again, the gray area that we're going from a residence where it's permanent to transient. So if we're going to blend this into the code, we need to come up with something that fits in that gray area because this short-term vacation rental scenario is not a clear answer on either side. I mean, the most restrictive you could go is say, as soon as it's transient, it's a hotel. To your point, that would be pretty restrictive.
I'd maybe jump in and possibly recommend, since we've decided to pursue the registration process and not the permitting process, you know, really getting a handle on occupancy and enforcing occupancy will be problematic, you know, since we're going with more of an informal process and a streamlined process. So setting an exact cap when we don't have a permit process or a, we're not intending to do a site inspection prior to them operating, it might be problematic enforcing it, since we've gone with a lesser permitting process.
I have a question. I don't know if you'll be able to answer. Could you said something about site inspection or if you'll be able to answer? So Fire Marshal has been doing inspections. So how is then not going to play into this factor? Are we going, is that still going to be a requirement of the jurisdiction in charge? Are we going to worry about that? Because that would be the only reason I would even, and I agree. I don't know how you're going to enforce it unless somebody calls in and says that there's something going on. How is, how does the jurisdiction in charge going to, do they come into play or not with that?
I actually, can I jump in? I've had that conversation with Chief Johnson and he's flat out said that there's no way possible for him to actually do this, especially with the number of short-term rentals in our area.
And I'm just tying that to safety with fire, with, you know, just closing that loop. Okay. I mean, I agree. I don't know how you're going to enforce it. My only concern would be if there were the violation, how do we, how are we going to deal? So say, you know-
Can I answer that?
We get that phone call and it's been repeat, 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 but we don't have anything in the, how do we navigate even the complaint?
So the laws in effect currently are enforceable. State law, under state housing law, there are criteria for what is considered substandard housing. And housing in state housing law extends to not just single-family dwellings and apartments, but hotels, motels, any transient lodging. If it's built like a house or built like someone's going to stay the night, state housing law applies. And the criteria, and hopefully to alleviate some of the concerns of the good actors in the room, the criteria is not modern anything. It is simply, is what was built and how it is used consistent with a safe environment? So is the electrical safe? Is the plumbing safe? Is the structure safe? Do you have proper egress? And there's a component of that as it relates to fire departments. Anything that the fire department determines is a hazard can be considered substandard housing. Now, fire departments, we have nine fire districts. They're all going to have a little different level of sensitivity over this based on their population and their topography. They're going to make the decisions in their districts when they see a hazard, based on the fire code and their own ordinances. As code compliance, we're the hub for enforcement on violations of ordinance. If the fire district cannot affect a change, they often send those complaints to us. So if they get a complaint and they go out, they see a problem, it can't be arrested by their powers, our code enforcement can open a substandard housing case and pursue it that way. The challenge is having the teeth to follow it up. Fines alone are a challenge. But under state housing law, if you have continuing violations that aren't remediated, you can follow the process of abatement through closing the doors or seeking a judgment. Or there's a lot of options that we can tease out as we move forward here, but we do have effective codes. We just have to have an effective communication and enforcement platform across every district that manages this, including the sheriff's office. We can work with them very closely over sound issues if we have an effective sound ordinance to coordinate so that they find the issue and we enforce. So there's a lot of options here that we can, we can, let's say cobble together to make an effective ordinance for you.
Okay, thank you, Doug, for that explanation. So I guess, I mean, common sense. And if the common sense, I mean, if it's going to, we're going to keep seeing that common sense not be used, then yeah, I think we're going to happen about that. But I can't see most individuals that are using this violating it. I mean, I think it's one and, like you said, there's, there's few. And if it, if it changes, then I mean, this is, it can come back for a policy decision, in my opinion. So I'm open to using common sense on this one.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is it, is it safe to say that the overall direction we're getting is that if you can't enforce it, don't write the ordinance? But if you can enforce it, make sure that you have the resources necessary and enforce what is written? Is that what I'm?
I said, you said, don't write the ordinance. I say, write the ordinance, but we need to be wary of what we can enforce and can't enforce as we move forward.
Right.
Right. I think that's-
I guess I overstepped.
We're having a hard time. I think we all have our time, because right now we're on occupancy, right? And that's number. And let's just look at Lake Tahoe and South Lake Tahoe when they try to limit to eight people per, per, per unit. I mean, that doesn't, how did they enforce it? I don't know, because I used to live up there and I didn't even have a rental unit. During New Year's, I had 50 people show up to my house to stay there during the time, you know? Especially 4th of July, when you have millions of people. I think the issue is partially parking in some areas, you know? So that's something that needs to be addressed. Although Murphy's is kind of an impossibility. I don't know how we would address that. One car in front of a house sometimes is too many. But, and also, the times when people, some young person rents the place and all of a sudden there's a party at the house and the Airbnb person doesn't, didn't know that. That wasn't the intent that was put forward. But all of a sudden they're dealing with their house getting wrecked and the neighbors being pissed off. I think these are both some of the major issues that we're trying to deal with, the occupancy. I think that the parties issue needs to be dealt with by the Airbnb person when it comes to the deposit that's taken. And that moment, that crosses the line. We have a noise issue that we can use to put the complaint in and then they violate the rules of the Airbnb. Those people are going to be fine. So it's going to maybe temper the amount of people who are willing to lose, like let's say, $800 or $1,000 on a deposit, you know, in some instances. The parking issue is the one I'm having a hard time. That's going to be a blanket thing across the county. And I don't think occupancy is the way to solve it. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I have a question for Sarah. Since this discussion is going down the path it's going. Currently in front of us, it says on the occupancy limits proposed, two persons per bedroom plus two additional with a maximum of up to 12 people. With that in the ordinance, whether the people follow it or not, whatever, does that not protect the county? If something happens, if somebody has 50 people and somebody gets hurt or fire starts and people, whatever, something in place protecting legally the county?
I mean, it may to some extent, but if we're not enforcing, then maybe not. I mean, I think it's- I think I'm struggling with, I mean, yes, I suppose it could, it could in theory be somewhat protective of the county, yes.
Thank you. I mean, we can't enforce every law or every ordinance that we have. We do the best we can to enforce them. And most of the time is when we get complaints that we have to go out and enforce. And I think with this would be the same way. You get complaints from the next door neighbor that there's 50 people over there and they've been there all weekend and, or whatever. Then we have something in place we can go out and enforce. But to go around all the time and have somebody specifically go check all the Airbnbs and all short-term rentals and whatever, I don't think that's possible.
Right.
But I'm just looking at the liability of the county with something not in place, that somebody could come back and sue and bring the county into that lawsuit based on they had no structure.
I mean, people can always try that, of course. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think to the extent, I mean, I think it just- Yeah, I mean, I think, I think to the extent, I mean, I think it just depends on how it's done. I think if we, if we ask people to self-report, you know, what the occupancy is going to be and, you know, we certainly are entitled to rely on that to, at least to some extent, yes. Which I know is one of the, I mean, I think the self-reporting was kind of the thought process, right? Is when they register, they would.
When they read.
And then we enforce it that way.
Yeah.
So.
I'm just concerned about any liability that we may have by doing something.
Or by not doing something.
Not doing something.
I mean, I think, I think that if we're not actually affirmatively permitting, right? I mean, I think, in my mind, there's sort of a distinction. If we're, if we're telling people, "We are going to issue you a permit," there's some expectation at that point that we are kind of doing our due diligence and checking things out. If we're just telling people, "Hey, if you, if you engage in this, you have to register and pay TOT," I mean, I think that's a little bit different. So, I mean, I think to a large extent, it depends on what this is going to end up looking like. I, you know, I don't think the county really takes on liability for just telling people, "Hey, if you engage in this, you have to register and pay TOT." But if we are doing something more robust than that, then yes, we would want to have something like that in there for sure.
Thank you.
Just one more point on the 12 that I would like to make. I've rented a place that was very large and I had only family up there. Of course, we did party a little bit as a family. But, uh, that was ver, that was very nice. And we had more than 12 people in the family up there for Christmas, for Christmas, you know? Up in your area, you know? It was very nice. And 12, 12 wouldn't have been enough for me to have all my family there.
Ms. Galino.
Hi, Kathy Galino again. Quick question. Is the direction going to be then to have a registration process and a business license process? Was that clarified?
Well, I think those are two separate, I mean, generally speaking, if you are operating a business in the county of Calveras that meets the definition of a business, you have to get a business license. That's just existing local law.
Okay.
And then I think what they're talking about now is, is whether to separately, right, for these particular types of establishment businesses, whatever you want to call them, whether they're going to be reg, just registering versus, which is what they're already doing, right? Already registering with the treasure tax collector.
Right.
Versus there being some sort of additional permitting process.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, because I had a chance to speak with the tax collector. She can't be here today, she's on an appointment, but, so that was one of the things she wanted to make sure that, you know, it's somehow distinguished very clearly. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Peter, I have one question about the, one other question about the occupancy. How, because in all discussions, I didn't want to drastically change copper, knowing that there would be some changes, but how would that impact that? Because isn't there a cap on that one?
Yes. Currently, the cap that I think you brought up was two per bedroom with a maximum of 12, plus two additional, maximum of 12. You know, that's really maybe a more fundamental question is, do we leave copper as it is under the current permit processing that we do have there? Or do you want to eliminate or modify chapter 2020 and have it consistent throughout the whole county?
Well, there, there are things in, in the current, such as docking boats and what have you, that are really specific to obviously to, that need to be in there for Lake Tahoe.
I'm also reading that chapter as is, other than maybe reconsidering, I really don't want to have permitting, and that's been my sticking point the whole point, the whole time, is permitting in one area and registration for the rest of the county. So, how can we, is there a way to allow them to do the registration but still have these certain caveats, like the docking, the boat hooky and things like that in that chapter? But allow them to self-register? Because then they're still going to have to do the business license, they're still going to have to do the permit, while then, again, once the rest of the county is only doing registration.
Well, that's, that's the status quo, that's the case now, right? Everyone, so everyone has to register with the treasure tax collector now so that we're capturing TOT. And the Tulak folks are getting a permit. So, I mean, the status quo would be to leave that as is. In answer to your question, I mean, just as a practical matter, without a permit, I think it would be difficult to enforce the things like the docks and those, those existing.
Yeah, that's where my sticking point becomes. That's where I have my, at least for me, I don't think, I get it, there are nuances. There's going to be nuances in Murphy's with parking, like we discussed, there's going to be nuances. But then how do we, I don't want staff or confusion to the public, you know? Okay, they did this whole thing and then we finally, how long is it going to take for staff to flag it that the address is in copper rather, and not in the Engle, you know? Even though they may relate to themselves in copper, like it's, I just, if there's a way to figure that out, I am open. I know we won't get it settled today, but it just, I, we've gone round and round and round and round.
I, I hear what you're saying. Just on, respectfully disagree. I don't need the permitting process in my, my area.
I know, that's what I just said.
No, no, I say, the whole county, you were talking about the whole county. At some point, maybe I misheard you. I apologize.
You did. What I'm saying is, I don't want.
So, you want to keep Tulak as is and you don't need the permit for the rest of the county?
No. What I'm asking is, how do we, how do we move copper into the registration process so they're not the only one having to pull a permit?
Oh, well, you can't have all those rules. She let you know, you can't have all those rules.
I know, I know that. And so, I'm saying that she's going to probably be a continuation of a conversation that we're going to have to have and that we've been going round and round about it.
I'll just say.
And I agree, I don't, but how is that okay for my district to have a permit? Otherwise, no, I'm not going to support the short-term rental ordinance. I mean, that's been the issue I've had the whole time. I'm not going to have, it's not equitable. It, there's issues and it's not going to make sense.
Well, we could certainly modify chapter 2020 to change it from a permit process to a registration process. There's some issues we'd have to look at as to how we can enforce, say, the occupancy rates that are, you know, right now required in chapter 2020. The other option is, as we originally proposed, is to eliminate 2020 altogether. We could write rules that, you know, if the property, you know, fronts a body of water, you know, these standards apply. So, those would pretty much only apply in, like Tulak. But there could be some other place where there's a body of water, that there's a dock or something. I can't think of any yet, but, you know, that.
And so, I would be open, and that's what I want to, if there's a way to do that, I am open to it. But I don't want to have, if we keep, I don't want to have two separate processes to register. And like I said earlier, register permitting, whatever it is, I just want it to be the same, as everybody else on this board. Otherwise, then it just, for me, it just defeats the process. Why do my constituents have to go through an extra layer of product crap?
I think I.
And I understand the history of the lake. I get the history of it.
Okay, and that's, since that's been in place and we put that in place, it's gone down. I mean, at one time, it was every week, we'd have somebody in here.
For Tulak.
For Tulak. And the amount of voters out there and, and the sheriff's office having to go out there because the boats were running into each other. And so, this, this ordinance was put in place back then and it's quieted it down. I'm not saying if you repeal it or, I'm maybe in favor of what Peter was saying, that if it's on the water, then, then you have to go through the permit. That way, it doesn't focus on one area, your specific area, but that area was focused on for a purpose.
Right.
And it resolved the issue. We don't have that problem anymore of what we were having back then, 20 years ago, 15 years.
If that wants to do the double work on the permitting process down there, then that's fine. But I'm just, I think it just, it just, it's going to be confusing. It, it just, I already am dealing with it down there where they don't understand, you know, why they have to do these things and the rest of the county does. And so, how do I answer to a constituent or to individuals with that? And I get it, it's in the ordinance, it's been in, I, I am very aware of what happened down there. I have grown up in that area. I am not naive to the situations that have happened down there. I know why that happened, but if we're going, if, can we evolve it to make it not confusing? Because that's one of the biggest things I hear is, I don't understand this and it makes it convoluted a little bit, but.
Sometime, and I hear what you're saying and it is an extra step for that area. I do feel for safety needs and the amount of boats and everything that are down there. I know you understand, Amanda, that it is needed and there isn't a clear path through just doing it one way with a registration to get the type of enforcement needed for that area. And every time I don't want to do an extra step of work, I say, "I don't understand" also. So, I allow those people, they do understand why. They just, they just don't want to, so they're giving you a call and asking you to make the change. And that's not always the case. Some, some are like, "Why is the rest of the county not have to do this?" Well, it's because you bought it like Tulak. That's why. That's what the answer is. And so, I think, I think that, I think that for enforcement reasons and to keep those safety measures in that area, we do need the dual. We have to have the registration for the tax collection purposes and we have to have the ordinance for our best tool for enforcement in that scenario. That's my perspective.
Peter, how many questions do you have left? Three? Is everybody, everybody all right to continue and finish the three questions?
Go on to the application process. Dave, do conversation. Is that the next item?
Oh, no, I think we already discussed that. I think that we've said, no, we don't want to permit application, we want to do registration. Next question is regarding the noise ordinance. And should we update the noise ordinance concurrently with this? Our recommendation is yes, we should. We've had a conversation with the sheriff's department. They want it updated because it's difficult for them to enforce. Without enforceable noise ordinance, we will have a number of complaints that we just can't, can't deal with. So, our recommendation is we update that concurrently.
Yes. Yes, for me.
Yes.
Sounds like a yes.
Now, we're flying through them.
Okay. The contact person for complaints, I think is going to be probably one of the stickiest issues that we have to address.
I actually would like to retract what I said earlier and I would like to go with this.
Hold on to the calls.
People, people call me anyway, so I know I'll be able to do it anyway, but I think that I would like to listen to my co-supervisors and go that direction.
I was going to post your phone number. Tattoo it on my head.
So, in, in, in 2020, in Lake Tulak area, there is a contact person. The public is notified of who that is, not directly, but indirectly. They say, "Well, who's the contact person on this one?" That's part of the application packet, we have that. That needs to be updated, you know, if it changes, so that the county can contact someone if we get complaints. And if, you know, if it's a weekend and, you know, the one's at the county, then the public can also say, "Hey, there's, you know, something going on next door, you need to do something about it." There's, you know, a couple of different recommendations we had in here. I think that, I'm sort of at a loss of what's going to be the best way to do that. I understand the concerns about having, you know, the owner of the property, their phone number out there, getting harassed by someone next door that just doesn't like them, but I think we need to have some, someone, some entity responsible to deal with immediate complaints. Most of these are going to happen on the weekend, so code compliance isn't around. And, you know, if it's noise, sheriff can go out there. If it's a real-life safety issue, sheriff or fire can handle it. But on to the day-to-day complaint issues, someone needs to accept responsibility of that. And I don't know what's the best course of action. We've really struggled with trying to figure out, how do we do this efficiently without tipping the scale too far one way or the other, that either the, the public, the neighbors don't know who to contact when there's a problem, or the operator is harassed by, you know, a neighbor who just is rude? Any suggestions you have? We're all ears.
I mean, the issue is that most of the, as you said, most of the calls would be coming in on the weekend and usually it's at one or two o'clock in the morning. So, I don't know who fields those calls. Sheriff's office.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, yes.
Point of contact.
So, I guess really the, we can.
Definitely willing to consider point of contact.
Well, I think, I mean, regardless of whether somebody is registering or getting a permit, it sounds like it's going to be registering. I mean, they're going to have to provide some contact information, right? Who the point person is. So, then I think the real question is, how is that disseminated? Like, is it just, you know, if somebody calls the county and says, "Hey, what's the contact for this property?" You know, we wait on the next business day or whenever, you know, that information could be given to them versus, is it something that the owner or operator is required to give out, kind of affirmatively, to neighbors within a certain? So, I mean, I think that's, we're going to have a contact person and their contact information. The question is how that gets provided to potential complainants, I think.
Yes.
As a practical matter.
Thank you for clarifying that, Sarah.
So, I guess that's it then?
Well, do you have, we could write it any way. We can say that, you know, you shall provide adjacent neighbors or everyone within 200 feet, contact, you know, number. Or it could be based on, you know, as Sarah suggested, someone calls and you message for the county over the weekend. Monday, we get back to them and say, you know, "I'm sorry, we couldn't get back to you, you know, but next time it happens, here's your call."
I don't think that works. I don't think that's fair to the neighbors on a Friday or a Saturday.
Well, that's.
How does the sheriff, like, is the sheriff willing to be fielding all these on Friday nights and Saturdays?
Well, they generally end up doing that.
Yeah.
And not, not that we're throwing it in their lap, but that's when, or.
Did I say he? I apologize.
It's nice that, like, there's property managers, right, that will deal with it, but it's also probably burdensome. But it seems there has to be a way to contact somebody in the moment, not Monday.
I do think that the good actors, at least in my district, have neighbors, that there's already that connection there. Again, it just goes back to the few bad actors that you can't get a hold of to correct the issue. And then the bad actors obviously give the good actors a bad name as well, so it just snowballs.
And I'll say something. You could require to have.
If you could come to the podium. Thank you.
You could require to have somebody in the county, because a lot of these independents are from the Bay Area.
Right.
Just require them to have a local person that's the contact person.
Within 30 minutes away or.
Exactly. With, yeah, rather if they're 20 minutes away or whatever, but they need to be living in Calaveras County.
That's a fairly, and that is a very, a fairly common provision when I was looking at other jurisdictions' ordinances. That, that's pretty typical. I think it still goes to the question of like, how, how is that information about who that person, who that contact person is, how does that get disseminated to?
During your registration. You need to put down that contact number in Calaveras County during your registration.
Right. But then I think, how do the neighbors find out who that person is?
Are we being proactive or reactive?
Right, as a practical matter.
Thank you, Kelly. Janet, I think, I think we're.
I'm out of the county. Can I speak to that?
I don't, I don't think so. Sorry. Shouldn't have. Thank you, though. Peter?
I just have one more question. In these scenarios that we're talking about, because we do have our good actors that, you know, generally don't rent to the wrong person, but, you know, things happen. Is there a complaint system like a, that we could put together, like a three strikes, you're out scenario? No?
Well, if we had a permit process, the permit could be revoked, but it's simply registration.
But can't we revoke the business license?
That would require overhaul of our, like, I mean, theoretically, yes, but that's not currently part of our business license.
However, you would be, we'd have to revoke property manager's business license.
See what I'm saying? Because everybody wears out my business license. If I have one house that-
Thank you, Kelly. Yeah, thank you.
I don't hear a consensus here at all. It's just that you have the same concerns that we have about how do we do this? I don't know, there's a simple answer. We could probably do some further research and see what other communities have done. It sounds like so the fallback position is, well, we'll have the information. The good players will work with their neighbors to say, hey, if there's any issue, contact me or contact this person. You know, for the rare occasion when it's not, we'll get that information for the next time. That's probably, probably as best we can do.
Perfect. That's right with everybody?
Yeah, I guess that, that'll be fine. If, if it starts getting out of hand, we can always bring back and come up with a different way to do it.
Typically, the complaints are going to be based on noise and the sheriff will go out. And if we can update the noise ordinance, that may solve the bulk of the problems. Okay. And then, last question. Do we want to have the registrations renewed on an annual basis or is it a one-time registration?
Maybe somebody in the, in the audience can answer this, but my concern would be, can we, if there's a change in the contact, I know the realtor group, that is not going to change because it's going to stay to that property management, but Joe Smith down the street might have a buddy who lives in the neighborhood, but then maybe his buddy leaves. How do we know that that has changed? So I guess I'm, I'm, I'm open to the one every year if it's self-registering, just to ensure that contacts have maintained and, and nothing changed, but I don't want to make it too difficult.
With the business license, you have to renew the business license on an annual basis. So I think, you know, this is relatively simple. We make sure you have updated information.
And safety equipment, fire extinguishers, et cetera, need to be updated, what have you. So they're signing off on that every year.
Yeah.
I think and every year is preferable to me.
So can I ask a question on that?
Come on up to the podium.
So if it's an annual, so I, I take on properties all the time, all throughout the whole year. Is it the date that they come on? Or is it January first? I mean, there's got to be some kind of set rule or I'm going to be renewing everybody every other day.
Right.
You know, and, and having people go out, having the, you know, fire department go out to one house one day, one house another day. See what I'm saying? So it has to be some kind of a structure, yeah.
It should be like a period of time, a window. I'm sorry.
Right. And as far as when people leave, you have to unregister, unregister them with the TOT anyways.
Supervisor Stoppard?
I, I don't know if things changed after COVID because that was like our black swan event. But prior to the COVID, I was aware that, it was amazing how often Airbnb's changed hands.
How often do they change hands?
No, it was amazing how often they did, you know.
What, go from property management to property management?
No, owners, homeowners of homes.
Oh.
And them selling the Airbnb and someone else picking it up. And it was kind of, some of them were kind of like weird swaps a lot, a lot of the times from what I was understanding. So they change hands fairly often in the past. Do they still change hands in ownership?
Yes, we definitely, yeah, because it's a second home market up there.
Right.
You know, I mean, basically, it's usually every five years. You know, somebody will come up and buy, then their kids grow up, they're in sports, whatever it might be, they sell. So, yeah, there, there is a constant turnover.
Two, three, or five years is what I understood.
It's, it's about five, usually five to seven.
Average.
Yeah, is an average.
I'm sure that, you know, the registration process, you know, when there's a change in owner, a new registration has to happen immediately. But then it would be, there'd be a window. It wouldn't make sense to, you know, have to track, you know, 700 different dates, you know, just like with the business license. I think there's a window, you have to do it within a certain timeframe. We could work that out.
Like, like, let's say every five years, like, 2005 or 25, 2030, I'm just throwing an idea out.
Well, I would, no, I was thinking more if it's annual, that, you know, between, you know, you have to re-register prior to March 15th for, you know, drawn a number out of the, out of the air. Just as the business license has to be renewed. When you open a new business, you gotta do it then. And then within that month, month and a half period, you have to renew it annually. And so it could all be done at one time for those who manage. Now, I guess that raises a question. Do, if I owned a piece of property and I contracted with a real estate company to manage it for me, do I need a business license? I'm the owner of that property. I'm the owner of that business. I just contracted with a manager to operate, to manage it. I think that's, that's a question that, that the tax collector will need, we need to know whether or not each individual property owner has to have a business license.
The consensus from our meeting yesterday was that, that it would be under the business and not individually. So if I register with Cedar Creek, then Cedar Creek takes care of it.
Currently, that's how it, it's been like that for, yes, thirty years.
So, so without the owner having a business license and they're receiving income from these rentals, they're not reporting that in, at any point as income? You may be because you're making money off of-
I send them a 1099.
Service for them, but-
I send them a 1099 at the end of the year.
You, you 1099 the owner?
Yeah, every one of them. And I also collect the TOT or Airbnb collects the TOT. And I pay that quarterly.
Still, I don't know. This is a good question about whether they need to have the business license or not.
But they work under my business license.
They are in a business regardless, they hired you to run it, but they're still, that's a good question.
It's a, it's a partnership.
1099, it's, that's legitimate. So they're still, they're still paying taxes on revenue, but the business is taking care-
Go ahead.
A business can lease a new property and run a business on it?
I, I would recommend, I actually think that there's some other issues with our business license ordinance, which is very old, that probably could need to get cleaned up. So I would recommend that we, well, we staff, we'll take a look at our business license ordinance as it's currently drafted and how it, how it might answer that question. And then we can make a recommendation to the board if we think that it should be cleaned up.
All right.
That ends our list of questions. Are there any other further direction that you want to give us before we go back and re-attack this baby?
Could, could you just give me the timeline that you think now, how this would?
Passive attention.
I think, you know, we could get a, a redrafted ordinance and then, you know, back to the commission. I would think we could probably schedule for the commission within one month. I do want to reach out. We do want to have a discussion. I want to re-reach out to the sheriff's office. We've had some very good discussions with them on the noise ordinance and enforcement. And we really want to make sure that they are, how do I say this, that they bless this before it goes forward. So it's my plan to give them a pre-review of this new direction product. So I, I would say a month before we're back to the planning commission, I would say probably two to three months before we're back to you for another discussion and possible consideration.
Well, no further questions. Thank you very much. This is an informational item. Thank you so much. Peter, thank you for all your work on this, for, for the, taking all the public comments and, and, and then obviously handing it over to Brad, but thank you.
You're welcome.
And we'll move on now to supervisor announcements.
In compliance with government code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out.
Can we start with supervisor Stoppard?
Thank you, sir. I'd like to bring up to the board that, talking with Mr. Oliver, and we've discussed this in the past, alternative building practices and methods within, you know, within the building code. It gives us the opportunity, as long as it addresses the safety issues, some al, for some alternative building practices and methods. We would like to, Mr. Oliver, could you explain this to me, for, for me, or to them for me as you're more versed in the code and even the first part of the code where it gives the official?
Wait, see if I can summarize it. There's a lot to this and it's gonna, it's gonna take a little, if, if your board decides to go this direction, it's gonna take a lot of discussion with council. But in discussing some hardships in relation to growing housing, part of it is a proliferation of, of building codes adopted at the state level and we're required to adopt triannually. I don't know, I'll just summarize that it is a three-year process. Most, if not all, of the state agencies that do write codes in relation to building have to go through the Building Standards Commission. And there is a component of state law and state housing law that specifically addresses that if there's anything that is considered unreasonable, an individual agency or individual corporation or government agency may challenge that portion of state law or of the, the codes. They challenge that to a local appeals board. And if it is found to be unreasonable, it is removed from the code as it applies to this jurisdiction. Now, that's how it is worded. And it was, just for some history, that's been around on the books since about 1961. That's when HCD was basically on its own and the Building Standards Commission didn't regulate the codes for every agency. Well, at this point, there's like eight agencies that have to go through the Building Standards Commission now. So there's quite a bit here that can be looked at to see if it's unreasonable, in my opinion. Like I said, it's gonna take a little time to suss out if your board is interested. And by, and, and just, just to cover the flow, typically, when an ordinance, when we adopt the codes through ordinance, we're adopting what the state has already said, this is the code. Once you adopt that, that is the minimum standard. And typically, it's the minimum standard statewide. We have the ability, once we adopt that code, to adopt more restrictive standards. Okay, that is the flow. And then within that, there is a paragraph of, of, of the code that allows the building efficient to authorize alternative means and methods. But that is only in relation to something that is equal to or better than what's in the code. So, so once you adopt that code, everything thereon either is the same or more restrictive. What this piece of law that's been sitting there says, for your local jurisdiction, you're taking the code out before it's in practice and saying it's unreasonable in this. So, so it's not in the backside that I'm always in. It's ahead of that. And, and if the board, if the appeals board finds it unreasonable, you file that with HCD at the state and say, we've taken it out for this jurisdiction. Like I said, I haven't seen anybody practice this. I've mentioned it several years now in multiple jurisdictions. I've said, if you, if you don't think this is fair in the jurisdiction, here's the method. Nobody's done it, but we have a housing crisis statewide. We have a housing crisis here. So if your board wishes to dig deeper, now's the time to.
Point being is I'd like to bring it for the board for discussion and see how much appetite there is for how far we're willing to go. Not that we want to thumb our nose at the state building code at all, but there's building codes such as the sprinkler systems in, in certain ways inside residential homes that don't, that don't work, don't work properly in cer, in certain scenarios. I'm using that example, I could be wrong, Doug, does, I can be wrong. But, but some of those could be found to be, to be not practiced and a lot of jurisdictions are complaining about them. But more so, I'm also into the alternative building practices and methods that are equal to also and how, how far we're willing to go with that also. So this is, this is, this is, the building codes is substantial cost to building homes at all anymore. And, and it goes through a roof. At the same time, there's, they're in there for a reason because of safety and we need to be open-minded about that and not go down a route that's going to put anybody in jeopardy. So I'm just, want to see what, bring it to the board if they want to hear it and see how far they're willing to go with that sort of type of scenario.
Supervisor?
Well, I understand what Supervisor Stoppard's talking about and what he's saying. I, I wouldn't be opposed to it if the rest of the board is, wants to do that. I don't know how much work that's going to place on the building department and Doug to bring something forward like that, but the rest of the board is interested.
I'm not opposed. If that-
Supervisor Endall?
Any way we can make it more affordable for our constituents, if there's a way, please do, look into it.
Yes, please. Thank you, Doug.
We'll prepare an informational item for your board in the coming months.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Stoppard.
Yeah. Don't want to put too much on you at once, Doug. Hurry up.
Very well.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
No pressure.
You know, you know what? Off the top of my head, just thank you for the opportunity to work with our chair as vice chair. This is the second time I've been vice chair on the board. I do appreciate working with you all, even, even when I misunderstand what some people are saying, I, I do respect your, your position. So I'm very excited. I think that, you know, we've been very good at, or been blessed with having a board that's worked together for years. It looks like we're coming together with another one that's functional. And just as long as you all can keep me reined in, we'll be doing okay. So thank you. I just, it's a pleasure to work with you all. Thank you.
Supervisor Topol.
With that, no, I don't have anything other than maybe Supervisor Follendorf talk about the Central Sierra and Child Support Agency meeting. Excuse me. Autumn can talk about our meeting yesterday.
Supervisor Follendorf.
Last night, Gaye and I attended LAFCO.
There you go.
And John has agreed for one more year and we're gonna go through that process to hopefully recruit. Thank you, Stacy, for being there last night and thank you to the CEO for being there as well. And this Thursday, along with the chairman, but this does not exclude any board member, any public members, to what Kathy said earlier during staff report, we will be going down to Sacramento to comment at the CPUC regarding the funding for round one for Calaveras County. Kathy and IT and Barbara at ICIC have been really doing a lot of work in getting not just letters of support from legislative elected, but community members from the school district to the hospital district. I mean, I know I'm missing a list, there's a whole list. And on top of those letters, videos, so those will be getting compiled and sent to the CPUC as well for comment. The other thing, I guess this is more of a question or to staff and then I guess also to board. It's been a while and I know Brett is still getting in the swing of things, but are we going to cure greenhouse gas this year? Are we coming directly to the board? I, I'm just want to get my head with that timeframe.
How about hardwood? Oakwood?
So I believe the planning commission had passed that on to the board, so I will request that Brett bring it forward to the board in the next 30 days.
I just wanted to make sure that, I wanted to know what the sequence was, so, okay. And then lastly, yesterday, was that yesterday already? Yes. I'm in back-to-back meetings and that. And I'll let the chairman say more, but I did attend the strategic planning meeting and we did talk about hardwood. So it's coming. It's coming. Yeah. Yeah.
Supervisor Fungshol.
Supervisor, I like it.
Supervisor, I like it. Yes, yesterday with supervisor Tofanelli, I attended the Central Sierra Child Support Agency Board. Great to learn about that group that serves Alpine, Amador, Calaveras, and Toolumi. Good example of all of our collaborations. On January 24th, I attended the Upper McCallum River Watershed Authority Meeting. Learned about that group, all of their fuel reduction plans, watersheds, forest health and resiliency. Really appreciate their work. And lots of meetings for me so far, getting settled on various committees and organizations. It's been fun.
Supervisor, thank you. I'd like to report that on the 15th, I'd like to thank administration and facilities for demoing the house in Murphys. That was a huge, huge issue, and it could have ended up in a disaster. And thank you so much for taking care of it so quickly. On the 16th, supervisor Andal and I met with Senator Alvarado Gill, just for an informational. On the 22nd, I attended the BPAC Caltrans with supervisor Follendorf. On the 24th, the RCRC Zoom update with Barbara. On the 24th, we had a town hall meeting regarding the meadow that we would like to see made into a natural preserve at Rosetti's Restaurant in Avery. And then yesterday, I attended with supervisor Follendorf the strategic planning session. And I wanted to make sure the board was aware that in March, the beginning of March, we're going to be having the Sierra Nevada Conservancy coming and doing their meeting in Murphys. So that's a big deal for us, and it'd be fantastic. And they'll be going over all the work that they've done in Calaveras and, and hopefully work going forward. So that's it. So with that, at, time is at 12:39, close the meeting. Thank you all.